Good evening, everybody. I'm Jay Leipzig, the Planning Director for Johnson County. I'm going to call this meeting to order this evening. And we do have a couple of cases on agenda for this East Zoning Board this evening. But I also wanted to mention this is a new zoning board. So we have some housekeeping items and things that we need to take care of first. And without, I'd ask for some, a little bit of grace from the public while we do that very quickly. I will be able to get through these first items as quickly as we can. But I guess first items, I'm going to be the temporary chair of this meeting until we elect a chair. So Sherri, I'll ask you to call the order and read our Zoom statement, please.
Dan Foyle.
Present.
Rod Richardson.
Present.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Ken Klingensmith.
Present.
And Fred Wingard.
Present.
We have a quorum of five.
Okay. And Sherri, if you want to go ahead and read the Zoom statement, please, too.
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. The chair may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. For board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending the Zoom can hear you and so comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Mr. Leipzig.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Appreciate that. Jay Leipzig speaking again. First item for discussion and business this evening would be the election of officers for this board. And I did want to point out on your dais is a list of all of the members of all of our zoning boards and our planning commission members. The address, the contact information is on your dais. I believe that was, I think we talked about it at our orientation meeting, but we hadn't developed that yet. So I did want to point that out for your reference as well. So as I mentioned, a couple of housekeeping items tonight. The first being the election of officers. And so at this time, I will accept possible nominations from the floor for the Chair of the East Zoning Board.
Kelly Rast, I'd like to nominate Ken Klingensmith.
Fred Winger, second.
Okay. So Rast had the motion, Fred Winger, second. Any other discussion or any other nominees? Okay, all those, with that then, Sherri, if you would do a roll call vote, if you would, please.
This is for the chair position. Dan Foyle.
Aye.
Rod Richardson.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
And Fred Wingard.
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I apologize. I should have offered you a chance to speak a little bit and say why you wanted to be the Chair. So if you want to do that now, or if you want to continue with this part of the meeting, or if you want me to, it's up to you.
No, that's fine. We can go ahead and do an election for Vice Chair. I appreciate the trust of the board and me being the Chair and guiding the process. I think with the East Consolidated Zoning Board with the focus being the Southeast Johnson County unincorporated area that really encompasses Stillwell, Arby Township, and which I have a great passion for.
Okay. Sherri, you want to do the nominations for the Vice Chair?
If we can, we have a nomination for Vice Chairman.
Kelly Rast, I nominate Rod. For Vice Chair.
Ken Klingensmith, I'll second. If we can do a roll call vote.
Sure. This is for Vice Chair, Dan Foyle.
Aye.
Rod Richardson.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
And Fred Winger.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Jay, would you, for the next agenda and the adopt the zoning board bylaws, will you guide that conversation?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do that. In front of you is a copy of the bylaws for the East Consolidated Zoning Board. These have been, you'll find this is a very similar document what was presented to you before. Just with a few minor changes to kind of walk through on this. But this, since it is a new board, we're suggesting that we also approve new bylaws. So I don't have a lot of comments on this to say that I think this has been in front of this group for, or previously. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have. And I might note that Bob Ford, our County Legal Department, as well as Peg Trent, our Chief Legal Counsel, is here as well for other questions.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a discussion with Chief Counsel this morning about three, well, about several things on the bylaws. There were three specific changes that we thought ought to be brought up for discussion for changes. And if there's no objection, I can just state what those are for discussion. But it would appear to me that under 6.06, expartee communication, there is a reference that members of the zoning board should disclose to the planning staff the nature of any expartee contact with the public and any information obtained through those contacts that may have a bearing on their decisions. I think the word should should be shall. We conduct quasi judicial meetings here. Certainly, if there are any expartee communications that are going to be considered as part of that zoning board members' considerations, I think they have to be disclosed, made a part of the record at least. So I would propose that the board consider that change from should to shall. The other one was 6.10 with reference to public comment. There is a reference in here that comment should be addressed to the zoning board as a whole. All persons should refrain from obscene, profane, slanderous, insulting, or threatening remarks, political campaigning, and commercial advertisements, et cetera. Again, I think the word should indicates that it's just a suggestion. I don't think that's a suggestion. I think it's mandatory. And I think that should should be changed to shall. And the last one was in 6.14, there's a simple, just a mistake in the reference that in the event there is a request by members of this board for information not readily available, there has to be approval of a majority of the Johnson County Planning Commission to provide the requested information. That was just a typo. It should be the zoning board. Those are the three that Chief Counsel and I discussed. I wanted to bring it to the attention because I think each one of those deserve some discussion for amendment as suggested.
Any other comments related to the bylaws or discussion among the zoning board? Hearing none, I will entertain discussion around Rod's comments.
Well, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we make the change on 6.06 as discussed from should to shall. 6.10 from should to shall, and 6.14 to delete the planning commission reference and add the East Consolidated Zoning Board.
Do we have a second?
Kelly Rast, second.
Do we want to do a roll call?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest a roll call just because with Zoom, and this makes it easier to follow the meeting.
And these would be on the amendments.
Yes, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Sherri, we can't hear you.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
And Fred Winger.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, then moved for the adoption of the bylaws of the Johnson County East Consolidated Zoning Board as amended.
Dan Foyle, a second.
Sherri, we can go ahead and do a roll call for that.
Aye.
Aye.
Rast.
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
And Fred Wingard.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, just a brief comment on this. I will plan on submitting, be planning, submitting the zoning board for the East Consolidated Zoning Board bylaws as well as the West and the Planning Commission bylaws the end of September before the Board of County Commissioners for final approval and adoption.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 2C. Do we have any add changes or revisions suggested for the agenda? If not, then we can approve the agenda as stated in front of us. I'll make a motion to approve.
Fred Winger, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any disclosure of conflicts or interest? Hearing none, we'll note there's no conflicts of interest. And do we have any discussion or disclosure of external contacts or discussions? Hearing none, we'll mark that there's no external contacts or discussions. There were no minutes to approve since this is our first meeting of the East Consolidated Zoning Board. So we'll go ahead and move to board reports and report on the County Commissioners' actions.
Good evening, Chairman Shawn Penley, County Planning Staff. No updates for the Board of County Commissioners' actions at this point since this is a new zoning board. Other than to note that on June 15th, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners did adopt a resolution to consolidate the Northwest and Southwest Consolidated Zoning Boards to a new West Zoning Board, and also to rename the former Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board to the East Consolidated Zoning Board. And of course, there was a new appointment process as part of that adoption. So all of you are the new members, and so that was the actions by the board earlier this summer. I could continue on with Planning Commission actions if you'd like. The, there's no updates at this time, other than I will mention that the next Planning Commission meeting is on September 26th, and that meeting will be at 5:45 in this board hearing room at 111 South Cherry Street in Olathe. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So we have two remaining positions to be appointed?
Yes, I'm sure that is correct. Jay Leipzig, there are two positions or five positions currently filled. We have two more. We're actively working on those, and hopefully we'll get, bring those people on board here in the next month.
Any additional questions? All right, then we can go ahead and move on to the business before the board. We'll go ahead and hear first, application E23302REZAU, the rezoning for 2550 West 171st Street. And also with that is application E23303PPFP, preliminary and final plat for 2550 West 171st Street. And can we go ahead and have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Michelle Lineger, County Planning Staff. These applications include a rezoning, preliminary, and final development plat, final plat, sorry, for Stone Hill Manor. The map shows the subject property identified at the northwest corner of Kenneth Road and 171st Street. The subject property is currently a 11.63 acre platted lot. It is vacant and is currently zoned RUR. This slide shows the area zoning. The proposals to rezone from the rural RUR District to the RN2 Residential Neighborhood 2 District. You can see this area is a mix of low-density residential with lots ranging from sizes one to 10 acres generally. A portion of the adjacent area is also within the city of Overland Park, which would be anticipated to develop at some point in the future with more urban-type densities. These things may propose zoning consistent with the area. Proposed property is also within the Blue Valley Plan boundaries identified for urban fringe policy area, agricultural and residential. This area is described that it may be appropriate for orderly, reasonable development if there is adequate infrastructure to serve the development and should be located around existing residential development areas. Arterial and collector roads are on either side of the property, and public water is available. Here is the final plat drawing for the subdivision. It's a four-lot residential plat with lots ranging from size in two to four acres. This plat meets all the minimum infrastructure requirements with the exception of the requirement for the installation of dry sewers. Chief Engineer at Johnson County Waste Water supports this waiver that's being requested to not install the dry sewers, stated that it is not expected that sewers would be available within this area in the next 15 years. On-site septic systems will be installed on each lot when they're developed. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning from RUR to RN2, and staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat for Stone Hill Manor, subject to stipulations. And staff also recommends approval of the waiver from the minimum infrastructure requirement that the property install a dry sewer system. There are two suggested motions here. Number two lumps the waiver in with the approval of the plat. So please keep in mind that both motions need to be voted on separately. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the zoning board for staff?
You said, I think in your verbal, it was one acre, but I think you meant the minimum's two acre, correct?
I was, if I said that, I misspoke. The minimum, I've mentioned that the area has lots from one to 10 acres.
The area.
This plat is two to four acres.
Thank you.
Any other questions for planning staff? Thank you, Michelle. Is Dave Gamber from Phelps or Aaron or Kristen Stover?
Mr. Chairman, Township Zoning Board, my name is Harold Phelps. I am representing the property owner. Aaron Stover is here this evening with me to answer any questions that I can't. Michelle did a great job in her staff report as she always does, and I think all those, all the items have been addressed. We are, we do meet all the requirements. I think, as she stated, the exception to the dry sewers and wastewater just thinks 15, more than 15 years, you end up with the dry sewer sitting there too long, and therefore the recommendation for not putting dry sewers. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant from the zoning board? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead to move to public comments. I don't see anyone signed up to speak on it in person. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I have three people here on Zoom, but nobody has their hands raised.
Thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public comment section of the meeting. And for this application, any further questions by the zoning board or staff applicant? All right, we'll just have discussion among the zoning board. I, as folks know, I'm not real big on rezoning properties. But the RN1 is to the north of this, which is, that is one acre, or to the east to the side. East is an acre. The RN2 is two acre minimums. The RUR is 10 acres. This is only 11 acre lot to begin with. So I would be supportive of the rezoning of this from the RUR to the RN2. Any other comments by the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any, any concerns about this. Certainly, any rezoning is to be carefully considered. But it would appear to me that within the confines of this particular tract, engineering, and the applicant's done an excellent job laying it out, obviously it has to perk, you know, if they're going to use septic tanks. My belief is that the sewer access to this is probably some long distance away. So the waiver, to me, makes sense. There wouldn't be any reason to deny that at this point and just sit out there with basically a piece of dead property. So I would certainly support the rezoning.
Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we want to do a roll call for Zoom purposes?
I'm sorry, we didn't hear who motioned first.
Dan Foyle, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. And Rod Richardson, second.
Is this for both motions or just?
This is the first one.
Okay, Dan Foyle.
Aye.
Rod Richardson.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
And Fred Wingard.
Aye.
All right, then the motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the preliminary or final plat?
Kelly Rast, I move to approve a preliminary and final plat for residential lots to be known as Stone Hill Manor and approve the requested minimum infrastructure waiver for the reasons and subject to the stipulations recommended by staff enlisted in the staff board.
Fred Winger, second.
Any further discussion? Do we have a roll call?
Second motion, Dan Foyle.
Aye.
Rod Richardson.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Ken Klingensmith.
Aye.
And Fred Wingard.
Aye.
And that motion passes. And this will go to Board of County Commissioners for approval, recommendation for approval.
This is Michelle Lineger. It'll go before the Board of County Commissioners at their October 5th meeting, which is held here in the County Administration Building, Board Hearing Room at 9:30 a.m. It's located at 111 South Cherry Street.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, we can move to the second item on the agenda. Business before the board is application number E23310CUP. It's a conditional use permit renewal for 19220 Noll Avenue. If we can have planning staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Zoning Board Commissioners, zoning board members Shawn Penley, County Planning Staff. I'll switch our presentations here. Okay, sorry for the delay there. Thank you again, Shawn Penley, County Planning Staff. The request, this application has requested conditional use permit renewal for Advanced Baseball Academy. This is for an existing athletic field complex, and that will allow for training for youth baseball and softball. The subject property is located at 19220 Noll Avenue on the southwest corner of 191st Street and Noll Avenue. This is an aerial view of the subject property. The conditional use permit boundary is the north half of the subject property, which is approximately 20 acres for the total property. But for the conditional use permit boundary, it's the north half, which is 10 acres. And this aerial shows those two boundaries. So the CUP boundary is in red, and the overall property boundary is in blue. That shows the overall existing facility on the north half. And I'll get into some more details as far as the previous approval and what has changed since the time of the previous approval. But this just shows overall view of the subject property and surrounding area. I'll start with background of the previous conditional use permit. In 2017, a conditional use permit was approved for the athletic training complex on the subject property, and they were approved with a five-year term for that CUP. The CUP expired on May 18th, 2022. Staff became aware of this earlier this year that the applicant was continuing at that facility. Staff notified the owner that the conditional use permit had expired, and for continued use of the facility would either require a cease, they would have two options, basically to cease operations for the facility, or if the applicant and owner did want to continue on with the facility, CUP renewal would be required. The owner decided to continue with a renewal of the application, so they subsequently filed that application. The original conditional use permit in 2017 allowed for the two existing practice fields, one future practice field, pitching and batting cages, which are all existing on property, including the gravel parking area. In addition, that plan approved in 2017 allowed for a future indoor facility with approximately 24,000 square feet and a parking area. Those will be located on Noll, as I'll show in a minute. And that conditional use permit allowed for training for up to 20 teams and 240 youth athletes with no more than 25 athletes on the subject property at one time. So additional background on this property and owner's use of the property. In 2021, the owner submitted a separate conditional use permit application for a new indoor and outdoor facility at 19300 Metcalf Avenue. That CUP was approved in 2021, and the facility was constructed in 2022. As noted in a staff report for that new facility on Metcalf, staff did make a note that once this new facility on Metcalf was completed, the existing facility on Noll would be vacated. That's something that we know that there was a submittal that staff received noting that, and we handed out that information. That was stated at that time in 2021. However, there was no stipulation to that effect. I think that was something that was just stated that the expectation would be that this existing facility would go away when the new facility was constructed. However, the owner is wanting to continue with use of the facility. And as I mentioned, there was no stipulation to that effect. The owner is now requesting a renewal of the CUP for this subject property to allow the continued use of the outdoor practice facility. The applicant is also requesting a 10-year term for the conditional use permit. This plan here shows the approved plan in 2017. It's kind of hard to see some of the details at this scale, but what it shows is the existing complex with the two existing practice fields on the north half of the property, and also shows a future practice field on the far northeast corner of the property near the intersection of 191st and Noll. And finally, the CUP plan in 2017 showed the 24,000 square foot indoor building and parking area with access to Noll Avenue. That is what the applicant is now taking away from this proposal. There is no need for the indoor facility or additional parking area and access to Noll since they have a new facility constructed at Metcalf. In addition, as I'll- Uh, in addition, as I'll point out here in a minute, there's a, been a change to the proposed practice field, but this was the approved site development plan with the 2017 CUP. The proposed site development plan for this CUP renewal does a couple of major changes. One, it takes away the indoor building, as I mentioned, on Noll. That site will remain vacant and, and open space as shown here. There will be no access drive on Noll and no parking area on Noll. In addition, the, uh, third future proposed field has been relocated to the interior of the site just north of the existing baseball practice field. So they're going to preserve all of the existing trees in the far northeast corner of the site. And again, uh, just maintain the existing access drive from, from 191st Street. Uh, so they'll essentially be preserving everything within the site and the only change will be to add this new field, a practice field on the, the interior. As mentioned, uh, there is an existing gravel parking area that will all remain the same. There is a, enough room that would accommodate approximately 40 cars on a, on a general parking, but additional parking could be provided if necessary with diagonal parking, um, for larger events. However, the existing gravel area, the, the applicant believes would, would be able to accommodate all practices and events as proposed. This, uh, is another aerial view of the existing site, which shows the, the facility. So essentially all of this will remain as it is shown here with the addition of the future practice field here in this open space area north of the baseball field. All of the existing trees in the, the, the surrounding along the perimeter of the property will remain as, uh, currently shown. So, uh, some additional details on the proposed, uh, and the existing and proposed athletic facility. Uh, for the operation, this allows for baseball and softball training, including team practices. There are no tournaments or games or any other competitive play on these fields. These are, this is just a practice facility. There are no lights, scoreboards, bleachers or sound systems. That's the, uh, as it is currently, it will remain the same. The applicant does not want to add that, uh, those types of facilities at this site. Uh, team practices are held on the property from March through October. There is minimal activity in the winter months, uh, uh, to allow for individual training, but that's as needed. Uh, that's very rare. The athletic, athletic facility is also closed during inclement weather. So anytime there's any, uh, uh, weather that would not allow for practice, they, they close the facility and do not use it. Hours of operation are generally from nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Sunday. Those hours will vary depending on the school year or in the summertime. That's generally open, uh, on the summertime that, that full hours would be allowed. So as I mentioned, hours will be limited during the school year with a typical practice schedule for two nights a week from five PM to sunset as requested by the applicant. The team noted that, uh, the applicant noted that teams play games on weekends at other complexes. So typically there's no practices on weekends during the school year. Each field has one team practicing with an average number of 12 players. There's approximately a total of 56, up to 56 people onsite at one time for practices and that allows for an overlap and staggered schedules between teams, but generally there's only two teams practicing at one time. But a third team may be arriving to get ready while the, one of the teams is leaving the site. So that's why they would allow for, they want to allow for additional people on the site at one time. In addition, as the applicant has requested, uh, they are requesting showcase events for high school players that would allow for a total of up to 200 players, approximately a total of 82 people would be onsite at one time. As the applicant noted in the narrative, uh, not all 200 players would be on this site at one time. They're, uh, they would be scheduled so that they would be, uh, during one whole day, there might be a total of 200 athletes, but at any one time, they generally only expect a total of 82 people onsite for training and showcase events on this site. There's additional information for what the applicant is proposing in their narrative with a detailed schedule of typical practice schedules and showcase events. These are just some, uh, pictures of the existing facility. The picture on the top is the outdoor, uh, baseball practice field. Picture below is the softball practice field. There are existing batting and pitching tunnels onsite. Uh, the applicant is proposing those to remain as they are. These are located between the two practice fields. Uh, no changes proposed to those existing, uh, practice areas. And this, uh, this photo on the bottom is a view, uh, from the west property line looking north towards 191st Street. So this is right on the, the west property line and off to the right of the picture here is the parking area. As you can see, the, the site, uh, for the existing site sits at a lower grade. It's approximately eight to 10 feet below grade from the west property. And this also shows the existing overhead power lines. There's, uh, large transmission power lines that, uh, run through the site diagonally through the center of the site. This is a zoning map of the surrounding area. The, the subject property is in the center here at 191st and Noll. The site is zoned RUR, uh, agricultural, rural agricultural. And majority of surrounding properties are rural or low-density residential as indicated here on the map. There's also property on the north side of 191st Street with an existing KC PNL substation, a large electrical substation, which also includes open space, uh, where the, those transmission lines extend from through the property. As part of this application, uh, the applicant submitted a traffic impact analysis and the, they took into account all existing traffic count data for 191st Street and has a daily, uh, traffic volume of 2,134 vehicles between Noll Avenue and Heritage Drive on 191st Street. The traffic analysis indicated that the trip generation would estimate that there would be 1,440 daily trips for regular practice and training events and 600 daily trips for large events such as showcases. And that's given because of the time with multiple teams practicing on a general day. And then again, the showcase events are really more concentrated at one time, generally in the mornings. The traffic analysis concluded that left or right turn lanes are not warranted for 191st Street at the site driveway. Uh, there's additional details provided in that traffic analysis, uh, to explain that. The intersection of 191st Street and the site driveway is projected to operate at good levels of service for both the regular training sessions and large events. Uh, Public Works Department has reviewed and accepted the traffic analysis. So I'll go through, um, some of the details for the, our golden analysis that staff reviewed for this application, uh, any land use application. Uh, staff provides a, an updated, uh, criteria review for the application. Um, as noted, uh, according to our county regulations, athletic field complexes are allowed in the RUR district with approval of a conditional use permit just as we have today with the existing CUP. So staff looked at one of the criteria is whether or not the use is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. This neighborhood, as I mentioned, is, uh, generally, uh, consists of low-density residential and, and rural residential development and agricultural open space. Uh, there is the KC PL substation, um, on the north side of 191st Street. There is also a single-family home on 20 acres to the west of the property and properties to the south are, uh, developed with generally single-family homes ranging with lots ranging from one to seven acres. So staff reviewed this again, as, uh, mentioned in 2017, our, uh, staff review is consistent. Uh, we do that the athletic training complex for baseball and softball with limited use as requested is compatible with the neighborhood and follows the general purpose and intent of the regulations subject to the CUP stipulations. Additional, uh, review for the golden analysis, we looked at any detrimental effects in nearby properties. Um, the, the subject property, as I mentioned, is on, uh, total 20 acres with the CUP area only being the north half of 10 acres. Uh, the property does include natural screening with existing trees and native vegetation that will be preserved, preserved with this proposal. Uh, the existing and proposed activity areas are located on the north half of the property approximately 375 feet from the closest residence, which is to the west. The site, uh, sits at approximately eight to 10 feet, uh, below the, the property line to the west. And this athletic complex, uh, has minimal visibility or impact to surrounding properties. Uh, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting as part of this application. This is not required, but it was recommended. The applicant did hold the neighborhood meeting on August 15th. And the summary is included in your packet. There are approximately 30 people that attended the meeting, both some, uh, in favor of the application and some who were opposed. Uh, staff also received some public comments just today and those were handed out to you before the meeting. Those will be made as part of the record. There was a, an email from, uh, a neighbor, uh, to the south, I believe, um, Marina Huska. And I think another email that was sent to, um, County Commissioner that is also going to be made as part of the packet, uh, requesting this information to be read on the record. And of course, there will be opportunity for the public to speak, um, on this public hearing as well. So, uh, to conclude staff presentation, um, the requested conditional use permit satisfies the standards for issuance of a CUP according to Article 23 of the regulations. Subject to the compliance with the recommended stipulation, the use is consistent and compatible with the surrounding zoning and land uses. And with the recommended stipulations, the use will cause no, uh, cause minimal detrimental effects to nearby properties. And the use is in keeping with the Stillwell Community Plan and Rural Comprehensive Plan for Johnson County. Um, and I'll also note that the use of this existing athletic facility, um, is, is not changing with the exception of removing the indoor facility that was previously proposed and requesting to allow additional athletes and events as proposed in the CUP renewal narrative. Uh, the applicant is here and would like to make a presentation. They have also provided, uh, request for revised stipulations to number three and four. And the stipulations, I'm going to exit this presentation really quick if I can figure this out again and share with you the proposed changes. Oh, in the interest of time, I'll read them because I, I did and I'm, yeah. Losing my presentations. I've got it loaded here. Uh, I've got another thing loaded. Uh, I'm sorry for, here we go. Okay. Uh, the applicant is requesting, uh, revised stipulations, number three. They want to, uh, remove the total of indicating people, including athletes or including coaches, spectators. They want to limit it to just athletes. That's the request that they're, uh, asking for. So the revised stipulation number three, as requested would be there shall be no more than 56 athletes on the subject property at any given time for team practices and training sessions. And then the revised stipulation number four would be there shall be a limit of four showcase events per year and not more than 82 athletes shall be allowed on the subject property at any given time during showcase events. So essentially what the applicant is requesting is to remove that limit for the number of, uh, just restricted to athletes and not people, spectators, coaches, et cetera. That's the request from the applicant. And as I mentioned, they could provide more details to that request, um, when they give their presentation. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit as noted. Um, I also do have a list of the recommended stipulations if we need to go through that. And I also have the uh, a suggested motion if you would like to use that. And this is included in the staff report as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have, uh, legal and public work staff available for questions as well.
Kelly Rast, I, um, just for clarification, and this was even prior to when I was on the board, but my understanding is every time this application came up in front of the zoning board, it was denied. So the only time that, the only reason it passed was the B O C C passed it, but the zoning board had been consistent um, every time and failed it, is that correct?
In 2017, the Aubrey Oxford Township Zoning Board recommended denial of the CUP and, and it was remanded back after consideration by the B O C C. It was remanded back. They recommended denial the second time. The Board of County Commissioners ultimately approved the CUP with the stipulations listed.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Uh, this is Ken Klingensmith. Can you review the parking with the recommended changes? That looks like we'd have 82 or 56 potential cars. Is there enough parking location on the property? For that many vehicles?
I'll let the applicant provide a little bit more details as to how they'll have parking accommodated on this, but the, the site plan shows spaces that would allow for up to 40 parking spaces. However, they, the owner has indicated to staff that additional parking can be provided with diagonal parking. I know the site plan doesn't show that. Uh, but also I believe the applicant noted that, uh, again, with the way they will stagger their scheduled practices and the showcase events, they would not have all of those people at any one time and, and they generally, I think the traffic impact study may address this also. Of course, not everybody would necessarily drive. Uh, there may be some carpooling and there may be people that are just dropped off and people don't park. They drop off the, the kids and then they leave. So I, I'll try to answer any more to that, but maybe the applicant might be able to provide a better response on parking.
Thank you for the input.
Mr. Chairman, um, I do have a question. Mr. Pendley, uh, just for background, I'm a little confused about how long this use has been active on this particular piece of property.
I believe there have been practice fields on this property since 2001, from my, what I understand the history. But the first conditional use permit approved was in 2017. I think the owner acquired, uh, Luke Town acquired this property, I believe in 2016. And at that time, he, uh, he requested a conditional use permit to allow for the athletic training complex. Before that, I believe it may have been used for individual practice, team practices. I'm not sure the history began, the applicant may know, be able to provide better response, but there have been practice fields on this site since 2001.
Okay. So second question, on the original approved CUP that expired, that would have allowed this applicant to construct essentially a building similar to what was constructed up on Metcalf?
That's correct. In this area, here in this area, if you could see, uh, the, where the building was proposed and parking was just on the right about on the far south end of the CUP. So actually they, this, the previous CUP had the full 20 acres. Uh, they've, they've cut that in half, but the building was proposed essentially on the, the central portion of the site with access to Noll. And that's right, under the current CUP, that's what they were, uh, the, the previous CUP in 2017, they were approved for a building and parking.
Okay. So that building is now off the table?
Correct.
Okay, and that building would have allowed exterior lighting, correct?
I believe the plans that were approved allowed for security lighting on the exterior of the building.
Right.
Yes, I don't think they had part, the parking was going to be gravel. They were not going to have pole lights, but they, they did have, uh, building mounted light fixtures, yes.
So at this point in the discussion, there's no lighting proposed for this site of any sort, correct?
Correct. And the applicant is, uh, in agreement with that for no lighting, even with the proposed renewal.
Are you aware of any time between 2001 and now, whether anyone has conducted a noise study to determine the actual noise generated by this use?
Well, uh, that's a good question. I do know that in 2021, when the applicant first was considering an amendment to that plan, they did provide a noise study for the proposed building because there was a question. I believe they were, they were going to be conducting more batting practice within the indoor building. So that was a concern. So they did provide a noise study for that proposed building. I'm not aware of any other noise study that was prepared for the existing outdoor facility.
Next question is, and I, this is probably, this should, I should know this, but I don't just see it. Is this, we talk about a baseball academy, are we talking softball or hardball?
Uh, this is both, uh, baseball and softball. So there's the two, um, groups that they have for the Advanced Baseball Academy and the Advanced Fast Pitch Academy. So there'll be both, uh, youth baseball and softball practices.
No pickleball.
Not to my knowledge, no.
How about, um, how about, um, uh, on the traffic, uh, question, uh, according to the, uh, according to the traffic study that was submitted to us, it says that the data indicates the daily traffic volume for 191st Street is 2,134 vehicles per day. Um, do you know, or have you been able to find out what the rated capacity in vehicles per day is for 191st Street, any, anywhere around that location?
I would want to defer to our public work staff. Scott Karyogas is here and he may be able to provide better answers on the capacity of the streets and he could speak better to the capacity of streets.
Let me just pose my question and he can think about this. The reason I ask is, I mean, the, the capacity, I noticed that this is going to enhance, at least enhance traffic by what, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but the 1,440 additional, uh, trips, uh, per day and the trips usually, you know, in and out. So if we're adding, are we adding 1,440 on top of the 2,134? Because I know on, uh, the traffic capacities on 199th Street, that would probably exceed that and there are similar roads. I'm just, I don't know whether we're looking at a surge of all of this traffic being there. So I'm, I would just simply like to understand what the rated capacity for that is. Obviously, Noll is gravel in that area. Or I think it is. I, I was out there today looking at this and that appeared to be the case. So before we make a decision, I would like to know whatever the county is aware of in terms of whether the traffic that would be generated by this site would either push the traffic capacity of 191st Street to the limit or exceed it. And basically the same for Noll. So I'll just reserve that and you can, you guys can think about it. Let's see, I only had, I think, one other question. On this proposed revised stipulations, I'm confused because they both say no more than 56 athletes on, on stipulation three, no more than 82 athletes on stipulation number four. So what's your understanding? Let's take stipulation number four about the four showcase events and not more than 82 athletes. So there are 82 athletes out there. How many people would be allowed to be out there?
That's a question for the applicant. That, this is their requested revised stipulation. And they would have to answer that to better understand.
And the import of my question is, you know, you have 82 athletes and 3,000 people. I realize that's not going to be the case, but still the other, the way we currently have it, it's 82 or 56, you know, and we know, we know what the cap is on human beings out there. I think we need to know whether there is proposed to be a cap and if so, what is it? Or is it just open ended?
And that is, I'll just thank you for the question. That is all why staff recommended total people, including athletes, coaches, spectators, because we don't know. You're right. I, I think generally they intend for this to be just for players and coaches. There's generally no spectators, but there could be when they're holding these showcases, we don't know. So we recommended the total limit for people.
Okay. Just now that I think about a couple more, I'll get them out of the way here. So I, I'll shut up here in a second, but if this, if this applicant, considering the history of this, came into the zoning board or to the county and said, uh, we really are concerned about having a CUP. We'd like to rezone this to use this use that they're proposing. What would be the required zoning category for this particular use?
That's another good question. An athletic field complex or a training facility generally would probably be commercial, like a PRB2. I believe that was the zoning for the site on Metcalf. However, even with that zoning of PRB2 commercial, athletic complexes still require a conditional use permit. So the rezoning would really make no sense just for a training facility. But for a, any type of a practice or again, a gym, I, I think it's generally those would be in commercial areas, just exclusively if it was a business that was set up. But again, conditional use permits required, whether it's R U R or, or commercial. I don't think we have a zoning category that just allows it by right in the county. I think they always require conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Leipzig. I just wanted to affirm what Sean just said in terms of zoning category and any kind of athletic field use require conditional use permit.
All right. So last question then, initially, this was granted a five-year conditional use permit. I'm a little confused as to whether that permit, it obviously expired, but was the application to renew it filed for time to renew it? Or is this a new, is this a new, considered a new conditional use permit, not a renewal?
I believe you would say it could be considered a new application. It has, the previous CUP has expired. They want to renew the CUP for the existing development, the existing facility. But yes, the CUP has expired. They filed it after it expired. I, it may be the applicant can explain how, how they want, but it may be that they did not know, if I recall, at the time when the new facility was approved on Metcalf, I believe the applicant, we asked the question, are, is the existing site on Noll going away? And I think at that time, the owner told me, we don't know yet what we're going to do when that CUP expires. So I don't, I don't think they knew at the time.
And, and, but the original was five years, right?
Correct.
The applicant, the applicant's requesting 10 at this point.
And, and the applicant requested 10 at that time too, in 2017, and the, and the board approved a five-year term.
All right. My real last question. Why is it that this kind of use is only approvable? If that's a word with a conditional use permit, what's so special about it that it requires a conditional use permit?
I think it's because if it were just personal use, like we have a lot of different types of activities in the county, like motorcycle, dirt track, ATV, you know, whatever the case may be. If you're using those types of things for your own personal use, that's one thing. Same with the baseball. I, I could, you know, set up a batting cage for my son in my backyard and that would be allowed with personal use. It's when you bring in other teams or the public to the facility, that's when it is considered a complex, the way we define it as staff. And the fact you have here two fields and the batting structure and more of a team activities, that's why a conditional use permit is required. And I think again, that, that's, we, we have a couple of other examples in the county. There are at least three, maybe four now with the new facility, Metcalf, four baseball complexes, to my knowledge, that have existing conditional use permits. But yeah, it's, I think the requirement is because they're so unique and they can have the potential to have an impact in the surrounding properties. So that's why it makes sense to have a conditional use permit. And the applicant was agreeable to that. They understood the need to go through that and they've been agreeable to the, to the stipulations as recommended, with the one exception for revising stipulations three and four.
Any other questions of?
This is Dan Foil. Sean, I have a question for you. This, uh, do you believe that the, you said it was a note at the bottom of the, when this was approved, that the one on Metcalf was approved, that this would not be used anymore? Was that a note or a condition? Was it the understanding that it was going to be?
That was a, that was a staff comment on the staff report. That was not a stipulation. I, again, I'm not sure really where, if there's an understanding it was going to go away, that there was a staff note in the staff report. That was not a condition. To my knowledge, the applicant didn't state on the record, hey, we're, we're closing down our existing facility, we build a new one. I think that was just a, maybe an assumption that would happen, but that was not a condition or stipulation.
But it, it would be reasonable then to think that the residents nearby there would think that it's going to be no longer.
Some of the neighbors, we understand, were under that impression and they certainly have voiced their opinion. And, and I think that was mentioned in the neighborhood meeting, uh, be mentioned tonight, and we received emails to that effect. Yes.
Sean, my second question, Dan Foil again. Who enforces the, the cup? In, in other words, like who checks on it, make sure that the, the person is adhering to the rules and so forth?
County staff.
You know why I bring this up?
Yeah, county, county staff does the zoning enforcement. And so county planning staff will inspect and respond to any complaints. So if there is a complaint regarding the CUP, staff will notify the owner, will inspect the site and then bring in additional staff as needed to inspect it. If there are repeated violations, the ultimate recourse would be to bring back the applicant before the board for revocation hearing for the CUP. It's very rare, but it is possible. That's the way our, our article, I believe it's Article 23. The, the zoning regulations allow for that. So when a conditional use permit is approved, it can be revoked if there are repeated violations, but generally it's enforced by planning staff. When we get a complaint, we go out, make contact with the owner, inspect the site, do additional inspections if needed on weekends or nights. And that's how we respond to those.
Thank you.
Hey Sean, Fred Winger. The, the 10-year recommendation from staff, what was the, what was your thought process on 10 versus five?
Staff recommended a 10-year term as requested by the applicant, since this facility has been out here for at least, with the current owner for at least six years, with no reports of violations, except for we have received contact from the surrounding properties about the continued use of the facility when the CUP expired. In addition, at the time, I think this was approved in 2017, there was also a complaint that there was a report that there were additional athletes on the site that exceeded the 25 number. And as the applicant, I think, explained, and we noted this in the report, I believe, because there is overlapping times for these practices, although there's only two teams practicing at any one time, there's a third team arriving. And so there, there may be times when the, during the transition, that you're going to have more than 25 athletes. Those are the only two complaints we received. So given the fact that there's been no violations other than those two notes, staff agreed that the 10-year term would be appropriate with the stipulations.
Fred Winger again. So the, the summary of the changes that the applicant's asking for, they're not asking for the building. That would be probably the biggest deviation. And the other significant deviations, in your opinion, from what they had previously from 2017 would be the number of people on the field at one time?
Correct. Those are the two big changes. They're basically offsetting what we believe that with the building, they could have had more athletes at any one time. It's essentially a trade-off. They're removing the building and the parking area along Noll. And they're requesting to have additional athletes at any one time on the existing outdoor complex.
Fred Winger again, if they had the indoor building, they would be going year round?
Yes, as it was approved in 2017, they were planning on having year-round practices during the winter. And that's why I think part of the reason why there was a sound study and some other things, because it would be carrying on all year. And there was a concern with no leaves on the trees, you're going to hear it that much more. And there might've been some validity to that, but the, yes, with the building, they would have been using the site year round. And they, and they do use the facility on Metcalf year round.
Thank you.
Charlie Ross, I have a question. Um, so if two teams practice at the same time, wouldn't two more be arriving? Why would only be one arriving?
Because they, they don't all have the same exact practice times. They stagger them every half hour. The applicant can explain that better. They stagger the time. So it's every half hour, a new team's arriving. So they don't have two teams come at the same time and two new teams coming after. They stagger them so that there's rotating schedule.
Fred Winger again. Sean, when we reviewed this a couple of years ago, we had a very lively discussion over quite some time about traffic safety in the area. Is there any concern that the, there's not an outlet on Noll?
Uh, there's no concern from staff for that, because the existing intersection at 191st and the site driveway is expected to continue operating at acceptable levels of service. So that's why we had the applicant provide an updated traffic analysis. This is even more detailed than the one that, that was provided in 2021, when, when they were considering an amendment to, to the building. They looked at a more detailed analysis for capacity of 191st Street and the intersection to make sure it's still operated at a, a acceptable level. And the, the conclusion was that it did continue operating at acceptable levels and would not exceed the capacity for the road. And the public works staff reviewed that and agreed.
Thank you.
Any other questions of planning staff?
One more. Dan Foil, Sean, is there any concerns with the visibility pulling out on the 191st Street right there?
No, I believe the owner removed some of the trees right at the intersection for that site driveway. Scott, again, if public works could answer this, I believe they did. I believe public work staff did require a review of that in 2021. And the applicant did provide a site distance analysis for that intersection and agreed that it was an acceptable site distance for that driveway.
Thank you.
Charlie Ross, I just have one more question with the, so the drive-in, I'm assuming it's going to be two lanes. And then did they look at like the traffic flow of that many people arriving at the same time or leaving? That it doesn't back up on Noll and they can come in and go and get into parking spaces, come out of parking spaces and keep the traffic flow going with, just because people do come and go in groups?
Yeah, it's a, it is a two-way gravel drive. I don't know if they looked at the queue length for the existing driveway, but there was no, I don't think that there was any concern. And, and the applicant again can answer this because they know how the facility operates when they have a training, a practice schedule. We're not aware of any traffic backing up onto 191st Street, but that would be a good question for the applicant to ask how the showcase events would work and to make sure that that's acceptable. But staff had no concerns about that traffic backing up to 191st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. We'll go ahead and appreciate it. Thank you. And I'd like, before we move to the applicant's presentation, I'd like to ask Scott from Public Works if he can comment on the capacity on the streets and a few of the points. Thanks, Scott.
Hi, Scott Karyogas from Public Works. Could you repeat the, the question?
My question is, what is the rated capacity in trips per day of 191st Street in that location, in the location of this use?
For two-lane roadways, it's 9,000 and then 400 for the gravel, like Noll Avenue there. So, but I would also like to defer to the applicant as well to, they went ahead and did a capacity analysis, level of service with this project. So they can probably further address any questions that you might have about that.
Okay. So the, the 9,000, what exactly does that mean?
That, that's ADT. So it's average daily.
Daily trend. Okay.
Yeah.
For 9,000, what about Noll?
Uh, 400.
400. Okay.
Yeah. Then that's for gravel, that's for gravel roads.
Right.
So the section that's paved would be 9,000 as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything, Scott? Did you have a question on the safety access from the driveway? For Public Works, right?
Uh, just the visibility there. So I live just down the street from this on 191st Street. And honestly, I, I take 183rd Street since that big bridge opened up most of the time, just because it's the railroad tracks. I don't have to cross those. But I do, you know, in the past, I've noticed like some banners maybe or something like that, it might've. Uh, but then I also remember just kids pulling up and they're young. I love baseball and you know, my kid plays baseball and they pull up and they, you know, they're young drivers and I think it's 45 right there still. If I'm not mistaken, it's 35 to the west going through that neighborhood. And so I imagine the majority of people are coming from Metcalf because nobody wants to drive their Johnson County SUV on a gravel road. So they're going to come up Metcalf, come across 183rd Street, or 191st Street, most likely. And I know, so they're going through that, that 35 mile an hour zone, I believe it is, or maybe 30. And then they get to that and it's a 45. And I just remember a couple of times, you know, you, you kind of keep it slow through there so that you know, there's kids pulling out, they're high school A's or new drivers, you want to pay attention. And so I just was wondering if there was, you know, what the visibility was, especially back, I know it's really good back towards the east, but what it was towards the west there.
Right. This is at the drive entrance.
At the driveway referring to, yeah. Coming out on 191st Street.
Yes. I think Sean mentioned it, but it, the site distance analysis was done previously back in either 2021 or 2017, when the last change was made out there.
Okay.
Um, so we didn't, there's no proposed modification to the drive entrance with this new update with the CUP. So thank you. It's adequate site distance.
Any other questions of Scott?
Well, let me ask a clarifying question. Rod Richardson here. Because I'm a little confused on the capacity issue, and I may be just wrong on this, but in discussions with uh, public works on other roads, I was of the impression that, for example, 199th Street, average daily capacity was probably, had been exceeded when the traffic count there was pushing up towards 3,000 cars per day. So 9,000 seems an extraordinarily high number of cars on a rural uh, two-lane road with limited shoulders, et cetera, et cetera. So I mean, and my concern arises out of the, the concern that it's another issue, but on 199th Street, knowing that, you know, I think even some indicated it was 2,600 cars per day, if I recall correctly, was exceeding capacity for that road, cars, trucks, et cetera. So what am I missing or am I just wrong on that?
No, I think some specifics would help. At this location, and I, I want to let the applicant get a chance to speak on it. Um, or if they have a representative here. But this specific location, I know that we looked at it and the level of service was an A or B, which means we're in good shape as far as capacity goes. So, um, yeah, I, I, yeah, I just want to let them shed light on as far as the, the actual numbers and details on that. Yep.
All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Scott.
This is Fred Winger. You've, you've reviewed the, the traffic study that was done by Kim Lee Horn?
Yes.
Okay. And your staff has reviewed it?
Staff has reviewed it.
And you're comfortable with the numbers that the road has capacity, 191st does?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Thanks.
I have the applicant. Thanks for joining us today. Feel free to do a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Great. Thanks, Sean. Kirk Peterson, 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri, here on behalf of the property owner, which is LC Town LLC. With me are Luke and Carla Town, right here in the front row. They are the owners of that applicant entity. Before moving into the substance of tonight's discussion about a new CUP, CUP renewal, whichever way you look at it. Before moving into the substance of tonight's discussion about a new CUP, CUP renewal, whichever way you look at it, I'd like to briefly provide what I hope is a little bit of context before we move into the meat of the of the request. So in addition to owning the property, the towns also have founded and also own two youth sports academies in Stillwell. This is getting to Mr. Richardson's, what I thought was a really good question. Sometimes you take things for granted and you said, hold up, let's have context. So I'm going to say it one more time so that we all get, again, this is a key contextual point. Not only do the towns own the subject property for which the CUP renewal was requested, but the town's founded an amazing set of academies. The Advanced Baseball Academy, which you'll hear me saying others maybe ABA, and also the Advanced Fast Pitch Academy, which is fast pitch softball, AFA. So it's then ABA and AFA that then utilize the owners, their CUP and use this training facility for practices. That's what we're here to talk about tonight. One other quick contextual point. I always find this every time I'm involved with somebody asking for a special use permit, a condition use permit. There's discretion here within the law, of course, to look at whether that entity or people should get the right to do what they want to do. I think it is relevant to take just a minute to talk about who is making this request for the renewal. So as you all know, we're primarily here to discuss if the continued use of this property for baseball and softball practices is in the interest of the public health. It's the legal jargon, right? But it's 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 also the law. Public health, safety, morals, and the general welfare of the community. As a father of five, Blue Valley kid kiddos, I'm seeing firsthand these challenges that my kids are facing that I didn't face being a Blue Valley kid here three decades plus ago. I think you probably all can relate. For that reason, I'm really thankful this couples here and the AFA and the ABA. As a dad of an ABA baseball player, I can see the town's mantra lived out in Stillwell right there at the Metcalf facility and at this Noll field, which is this, transforming lives one inning at a time. Now you hear that, you could chalk it up to cheesy, you could say, does that really matter? But I'm here to tell you, it's not just a cute saying. And I think there are even people in the room that maybe have had firsthand knowledge of this. The academies, AFA and ABA, have a huge focus, huge. It's what attracted my family to this to this academy, this program, is a huge focus on our kids' mental health. And this extends all the way to the the epidemic really of suicides. And you'll hear Luke Town talk again and again and again, I don't care about the trophy. I care about your your brain, your heart and your development. They focus on our kids' physical health. This includes drug education and accountability all the time. On being part of the solution to the damaging culture of bullying that we have, even in this great school district that I was a product of and my kids are in. On respecting teachers, coats and coaches and parents, on the importance of academics and on setting goals, I love this, on setting goals and working your tail off to achieve those achieve those goals, even when they're hard inside this Johnson County bubble. And oh, yeah, they do teach a little bit about baseball and softball, too. But these principles are infused in everything that happens at these academies and on this field. So overall, I couldn't be more proud to be associated with this couple, with the applicant. And I'm here both in my role tonight as advocate and representative, but also a member of the ABA family. So this applicant will continue to use this CUP in a way that is incredibly impactful on boys and girls in Stillwell and beyond the surrounding area. And it will absolutely, in our opinion, and this is for you to decide as you make your recommendation, serve the public health, safety, morals, and the welfare of the community. Thank you, Chairman, for that quick contextual aside. Now to the heart of what we're talking about tonight with this CUP application. First, and this doesn't come out of my mouth every night, that I'm have the privilege to be a part of a project like this, but I'm going to say it because it's deserved. Professional staff worked really hard. If you you did read that carefully staff report, that is a detailed, really, really helpful for us and hopefully helpful for you staff reports. So thank you to Mr. Penley and the entire city team for that. And the staff report in conjunction with that conditional use permit narrative that the applicant prepared that's in your in your packet. I hope when you looked at both of those, you'll see there's a very precise, by design, right? No hiding the ball dad joke, but no hiding the ball, very precise description of all the aspects of the way this facility has been used over the last five or six years and how it's going to be used going forward. So I hope you reference that. We can talk about those documents. Hope they're helpful for you. For that reason, I do not intend to stand before you affirmatively at least and go through every knit and mat that's in all these materials or what Mr. Penley talked about. Instead, I'd like to just highlight a few key points for your consideration as you decide what your recommendation will be to the full board, the county commission. So Luke and Carla Town have had the pleasure of using the property for baseball and softball practices since they purchased the property in two thousand seventeen, as you heard staff clarify. There have been no violations or complaints from county staff during that period, other than the, again, we can dig in those if you want, but there was a lapse in the CUP and we were notified of that. And then early on, folks didn't understand the transition that we have when they're accounting, counting athletes. So other than that, there's been no, I'll say, real violation at all during this entire period. Staff has found that the existing street, parking and other infrastructure, everything about the site continues to be adequate for the use as it has been for the last five years. You heard Public Works just address that. I hope some of you have had the chance, and I think you have, to walk this property because I got to tell you, you don't always pick it up, even with the photos, which is great that Mr. Penley did go on site and take these recent photos. When you go and see what it really means to have the west property line be eight to ten feet higher, right? Because of that berm. And then you see all the deciduous trees and evergreen trees and everything that sits on top of that. And then you look to the south and you see, it may not be eight to ten feet, but it's grayed all the way down there and it's another ridge, right? It's another berm. And then you see ten acres to the south before you get to house. You see, you know, I call that, I do everything in football fields, honestly, because I can picture Arrowhead, one end zone. That's two and a half football fields to the south before you get to a house. Or to the west, that's just over three hundred seventy five feet. So just over one football field. You pick all that up when you're on site and you really see this isn't a bowl when they're playing baseball practice and softball practice here. So staff has found that the proposed use is consistent with the zoning and uses of nearby properties and compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Items that Mr. Penley mentioned that is worth rementioning. No games or tournaments happen here. No bleachers, no scoreboards, no public announcement system. In fact, no electricity, by the way. Um, other than the overhead lines that are going overhead, but that's not good to tap into. No concession stands and no outdoor lighting. Now, let's get a little bit deeper on the use of the property. There are two two proposed uses, just to clarify, because this, for me, this can get a little bit confusing. I want to crystallize it as you're making your recommendation here. There's practices that are proposed and there's four showcases per year. I want to quickly hit each one of those so it's crystal clear in your mind. So first practices. The prior CUP, the one that was for the first initial five years, stated that there were no more than twenty five athletes on the subject property at any given time. The applicant now for the requested ten year extension is requesting no more than fifty six athletes on the property. Now, on its face, right away, you say, man, that's that's an increase. How do I? How do I evaluate this increase? But in reality, practice logistics will not change at all from the past five years. It's the same pattern of the teams coming on and teams coming off that are detailed in your packet and that staff refer to. So these practice times are staggered so that there could be, and this is important to realize, there could be as many as four teams on that property as you're going through that transition, right? And so, and because there's a warm up period and you're cycling through stations, again, it's all in that packet if you want to review it. So that is why we've made the request for fifty six athletes as a cap for practices, because frankly, we want to, even though it's not any different than what we've been doing at all over the recent years, we want to make sure we have something that we can live up to every single day. So also as a quick context point on the idea of practices, these fields by and large are only used six months a year. And staff went through this. This is another emphasis point. Mid, think of it like this, baseball parents know this, mid March to mid July, so take that four month period. And then take a break, it's too hot. Mid August to mid October is the other two month chunk or fall ball, as we call it, right? So you have six months. So not only is this only used, it's very important to the program, but it's only used six months a year other than random, you know, now and again, team here and there. But also, it's not like these are used seven days a week, all day, not even close to it. And again, I'm not going to go through every little detail in the report in your packet where you can see that. But generally speaking, high level, you're talking Monday to Thursday. During that four month period, I talked about spring, early summer. And people, you know, three of those four months, right? Kids are in school. So it's a very compact period. My reason for doing this is not to, again, go through all the times, all the time of the year. To give you a sense, this is not something like a bustling convenience store or something like that. It is half the year and it's a fraction of even half of that year that it's actually utilized. So that was practices touching on that. Of course, if you have questions, I'll happy to dig into any more details you'd like. But I want to talk about the showcase events. Showcase events, because the showcase events, that's something new. We're excited about it and we want to put it in front of you for your consideration tonight. But we need to tell you a little bit more about it. This gives sophomores, juniors and seniors in high school a chance to show their skills to college scouts. So they have a shot at playing in college and maybe even getting a scholarship. That's what it's all about. That is a showcase event. Now, there's, you may have been exposed to these, there's various types of showcase events. Very specifically and only we are proposing for these up to four showcases a year, the pro style workout, which means very important. No games, nothing that looks like a game. It is literally, I always think of it, I don't know if Luke would agree, but I always think of it like combine for football or something. You're going through drill stations, right? Which you can again, look in your packet and see Luke did a really good job of lining out. This is what it probably would look like. So again, no games, you're just going through stations. Athletes showcase their position at these different stations. That's arm velocity, that's running, that's defensive work. Um, no hitting here. We would do that back at the Metcalf facility, no players hitting. So again, you can look at your packet for the details, but we would like to hold these types of event up to four times a year, no more. It would be twice for AFA, the softball, and twice for football, football. There's my football reference. Twice for, uh, people will pay attention, twice for baseball. The the workout stations, this is also really important, are staggered so that we put in there, again, full transparency with this group. Uh, we could see this would be years from now, by the time we get that sort of reputation for a showcase, but up to two hundred athletes through the whole showcase. What that does not mean is that there's two hundred athletes there, not even close, not designed that way. It's very strategic, very lined out, as you saw in the packet. You know, minute by minute, or at least every fifteen minutes, what they're doing. We use the other facility for all the indoor purposes and come here. So there's not even close to that. That's why what we proposed is a cap at eighty two athletes onsite at any given time. And frankly, if you again are interested to look in that packet, this is standard for the pro style. The only time you have that many, possibly up to that many athletes is right in the middle when you do the sprints, when you bring them together. Um, the rest of the time, it's not even close to the eighty two, but we wanted to put the max on there. Now I wanted to pause and Mr. Richardson had had a question on, is there a cap on spectators? Because as I just came out of my mouth, it's up to eighty two athletes at max for the showcase at any given time. So the answer is, it's of course a good question. The answer is that a little bit of my knowledge, but really Luke being a pro scout himself, and this is what he, this is, he's one of the area's top experts in this, knows with the pro style like this, first of all, parents don't come. Now, could a random parent weasel away and whatever? These are high school kids, as I said, sophomores through seniors that almost all, some sophomores not, right? But almost all are driving themselves. And this is not appropriate. This is not something that parents are coming and gawking at. This is almost, no, no kid wants their parents there, frankly. They want to run from that. They're there. I mean, you relate to that. They want to get there and get this done. They are not worried at all about stacking up a huge amount of people. Now, again, being transparent, at the end of the day, if this board and making their recommendation felt compelled to support the up to four showcases a year, and we needed to come up with some max number that included scouts and possibly, again, possibly some spectators. You know, we were, we were talking about beforehand, we would, again, we would like not to do that because we don't think it's necessary. But to be fair, we'd throw out for consideration, we can talk about this, maybe a hundred and twenty, right? Just as as a number that makes you feel like, look, this isn't going to be crazy. Um, but there's a cap out there. But again, I'm telling you, from all our experience with this style of of workout is what it is, it's absolutely not going to be necessary. But that also, there was two other questions that were asked that I think nip on this point. First is the chairman. Chairman brought up, hey, especially for the showcase events, are forty stalls on that gravel parking lot enough to handle that? Again, an intuitive, good question, right? So a couple of answers to that. One, if you look at Luke Town's agenda, it was a sample agenda, what this would look like between the two facilities when you have a showcase day, you can see it's extremely staggered. So that's one. Two is because it mostly serves, not not only, but a showcase is mostly intended for our sophomores, juniors and seniors that Luke has been building into, you know, all the way up through the system. You have absolutely carpooling going on. This is what happens now, right? Um, between the Metcalf facility where people will be based, that's where they'll start and come over. So we're not going to have, you know, a car for every person, even some, nothing even close to that. Also, as you heard staff say, the forty is being pretty, I'd say conservative, if you've been onsite or you can look at the pictures, there are definitely ways to park more efficiently in that gravel forty is about the least amount of cars you could get in there. And then, as I said just a moment ago, in response to in response to Mr. Richardson's question, that this is not a parent event. So you're not getting grandpa and your aunt and your cousin and everybody coming. So we are very comfortable with the parking. Frankly, if we couldn't do it right, people don't come again and we just won't run a showcase like that. The last question before moving on was what about stacking, right? What what about stacking here? Entry and exit. And I think it was more of a general question for whether you're doing practices or you're doing showcases, but let's take showcases when it seemed to be, that seemed to be the context of the question. So go back to, again, the staggered nature of it. It's a highly programmed, almost, I say militaristic. I mean, it's like to the minute, right? Or you miss out, you know, that's when that's when the scouts are going to see you do this or you miss your station. So everybody is there at their appropriate times and it intentionally spreads everybody out between Metcalf and this facility. So in terms of entry and exit, we don't see any problem there, just like we haven't had problems for six years at practices with people going in and out. It just kind of empirical proof, if you know what I mean. It's, we just haven't had issues with that. So that's the stacking issue. Um, real fast, finishing on showcase, because I can imagine this is new. So I'm only imagining all, pretty much everybody up there is probably spinning on this, you know, is this showcase thing the right thing to do? So I would say this to you in brief, why should the CUP include these up to four showcases a year? And I'm going to give you a few points. These showcases are key for most of our players and other players in the area and Stillwell beyond to have a chance to play baseball in college. This is how you get to the scouts. Yeah, if you're number one draft pick, you probably got picked up in some national deal. But for people like my kids and other normal people, this is how you do it. And this is how you get a scholarship, which is important to a lot of people get into college. These showcases are typically very expensive. We're talking, we went over this today to make sure we had market rates, right? We're talking at the low end, there's an operator five, five hundred dollars, right? They can go up from there. There's another one that by the time you get your video done and all that, it's nine hundred and fifty dollars just for what you're looking at that packet to be seen by these scouts. That's if you don't travel. The problem is, and why Luke's so passionate about this, is you almost always have trouble. There's a, we talked about a Wichita one, again, that's expensive. Couple exceptions, but in general, you're going to Iowa, you're going to Oklahoma, you got to move. Will you do that? And if you take five kids, it's more than this. But you typically, you're at fifteen hundred dollars, just if you're going down, getting a hotel room, getting food, paying the nine fifty, all that. My point, I don't want to belabor it, but it's key to the drive behind the town's effort to be able to do these up to four showcases. They will do it at a fraction, a fraction of that cost, because they want the opportunity for this to be accessible to kids. So having a very affordable local showcase, just four times a year as a max for Stillwell players and others living nearby will, we think, and I don't think this is overstating it, for some kids every year, some number of kids, it will change their life trajectory. Going to college, their friends, they get into play, maybe they they get a scholarship that lets them go to college. It's a big deal. So this is not a throwaway item we're adding. We want your, and I know you will carefully consider what we're proposing there. So with that, may I move please to the stipulations? Specifically stipulations three and four that Mr. Penley noted, we had really, if you look at it, and I don't know if it's easy, Sean, to put it back up or if I can do it, just sort of staring at it. I'll keep talking just in case. I think you might even have it in paper in front of you, perhaps. Okay. So the tale of the tape is one word is changing. Let's start there, right? So there's a lot, there's words on the page, but we're proposing one word in each of those stipulations, three and four, that's different than what staff had. So instead of, I believe it says persons, right, is the word, people, there's a few words, right? People, including athletes, coaches, spectators. And we're saying we would like the cap fifty six for for practices and eighty two for showcase to be talking about the athletes. And 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 we've, I won't belabor that, but just that's, we've kind of supported that and talked about it. And I want to answer any questions that you have still in your mind about it. But frankly, we don't want to ever have problems with going over. We know this has worked with practices completely without any, you know, violations over the last six years. We just want to make sure what's hopefully approved is what we're doing, right? And that and it's working. We don't want to have to ever risk being technically, because of our transition periods, be in default of the CUP. We want to continue to do what we're doing. So those are the two stipulations we'd like you to consider. So one note before concluding, the quick note is staff mentioned, this came up several times. And staff started by saying in opening remarks that the idea was, and it was clarified a minute ago, the inference was by staff, which is fine, in previous staff report, was that if the Metcalf facility opened, remember the CUP came long before there was anything over on Metcalf. And as we heard from staff correctly state, that part of the existing, the five year CUP that was approved, there's a big building there. Then what happened was we opened the Metcalf building and we're coming here for an extension here. And Steph, the inference was, Steph said, well, we thought maybe that the Noll field was just going to go away. There wouldn't be an extension of the C. There wouldn't be an extension of the CUP. So I'm here to tell you, I think I know where the inference came from. It, it, it wasn't a correct inference, but not casting blame. The idea was that the word facility, I'm almost sure this is the issue. The word facility meant if Metcalf opens, that facility, the box that Sean showed on the screen on, at Knoll, goes away. We're not going to have two buildings, right? But I can look you all in the eyes right now and tell you, there was never, ever, ever a, a time where there was anything contemplated by ABA, AFA, Towns, that Knoll could go away. It is fundamentally critical to them operating, but I could get into it, I won't until you ask me, but field sizes and what they can do on the, between the two places, they've always had to have this. But, so I think that was just a good faith misunderstanding. We're not going to have two buildings. That facility will go away if we open Metcalf. In conclusion, given the highly screened and berm nature of the property, with the substantial distances to the closest homes to the south and the west, given the applicant's track record utilizing the permit on this property for the last five or really six years without issue, given the limited use of the property throughout the years, I kind of unpacked a little bit, and lack of games and grandstands and scoreboards and lights and anything other than just flat out good old fashioned practice. Given the traffic studies and staff's, including public works, finding that the existing infrastructure is adequate for the proposed use, given staff's favorable findings on the golden criteria and the zoning and subdivision standards, and given the incredibly positive impact on the health, safety and welfare of hundreds of children in Stillwell and surrounding areas, year after year, while this potential extended CUP will be in place. For those reasons, the applicant respectfully requests this board's recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners for the CUP extension for 10 years, with the requested adjustments to stipulations two and three. And I'd be thrilled to answer any questions now or later, if anyone on the board has.
Thank you, Curtis. I appreciate that. Uh, questions from the zoning board of the applicant?
This is Fred Winger. Would the, would the applicant actually like to come up and address?
We talked about it, um, and frankly, we've been working so closely together on this, unless there's some, something I don't know the answer to, then we're good, uh, Mr. Winger.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peterson, I'm going to ask you, I know you had, uh, the traffic study done, and I'm sure you've reviewed that.
That's right.
It doesn't answer the question that I put to Johnson County Public Works.
Road capacity?
I would always admit that I can be flat out wrong, and so I'll just put that out there. But my recollection is that the traffic capacity of 199th Street is something less than 3,000 units, trips per day. We have 400 units per day or trips per day on Knoll. Do you know of your own personal knowledge what the capacity of 191st Street is, the rated capacity?
I don't. It's a great question. We always go to county or city staff, wherever we are for that. But what we do look at is what you heard, what we focus on, and the traffic engineer does is level of service, which is kind of, if you follow me, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I play traffic engineer. It, it, the level of service, and this is As and Bs, which as you know, it's frankly acceptable all the way down to D, this stays As and Bs. That's a little bit of a proxy for how you're doing on capacity, but no, I don't know the capacity of that street.
Well, I, I would only put it out there that I, I think before the Board of, no matter how this
Agree.
goes, I think the Board of County Commissioners and Public Works need to put their heads together with you perhaps, uh, to figure out what that capacity is in reality, because that 9,000 per day uh, is radically different than, than what's been put out there for the capacity in 199th. Uh, but if it's wrong, it's wrong. We need to correct it on both sides. But 9,000 trips per day in 199th in that rural area of running into a 400 trips per day on Knoll raises some interesting questions. And I think that would, that would need to be, um, addressed. I'm not saying that's fatal at all. I'm just saying you're talking about adding 1,400 trips per day to something, and so.
But I guess they have, just for clarity, I'm sorry, those are happening today, because we've been doing this for six years, but keep going, right?
My, my only concern, for, for a rural road like that going into this with however many people show up, and we don't know what that limit is just yet. I think it's a legitimate issue as to whether, um, whether it's 120 people or 200 people, whatever, showing up there with presumably a lot of cars are going to create a problem there. I do know that, uh, in one of the, um, comments at the public meeting that you had, one of the folks, I don't remember who it was, expressed some concern about people exiting onto 191st and potentially creating some, some traffic hazards there. I was never sure from the comment why. But it, I did note in driving out there today, and I did drive around the site, look at it pretty closely. There's no mention in here of your client's willingness to put a stop sign up there. I assume that would not be a problem if that were part of the.
At the site drive, to be clear?
Yeah, I mean, just at the.
As we're exit, right at the entry point, exit point.
Where the cars coming out of there have to stop. You want to make sure people stop before they go onto 100.
Completely acceptable, yeah. That's no problem.
Okay, uh, so, um, you want, you don't want a limit on the number of people there, but you're telling us it's probably going to be not too many more than, than 120 at the worst.
Right. Trying to show good faith. If you need a number, we talked a little bit about it. We, we don't think that's going to be overly limiting if we have to go there.
Okay, um, let me ask you this, why the, why the, uh, given it's zoned R U R, and obviously, you know, there's, I don't think anybody sees this as a permanent use there for the next hundred years. The initial request was for a fi- uh, five-year conditional use permit. Would a five-year conditional use permit, if that in fact were proposed, do some material damage to your clients intend here?
I think damage, no. So to answer the question in short, no damage. The reason typically for SUP or CUP holders that do, you know, I'll call it flawless job over their initial term. In most jurisdictions, what we find is that's rewarded, because there, believe it or not, there is time and money and uncertainty that goes into every single time you have to come get a renewal. You're all, you're all reasonable, the Board of County Commissioners is now, but so is that, is that harm? Is that damage? No, but we do hope we've earned the opportunity to try to, to try to achieve your support for 10 years.
My only retort to that would be, yeah, I, I don't disagree with what you say, but any conditional use permit as a guest in that particular zoning category effectively. And, um, 10 years is a long time, particularly where you're not going to build the building here, and you don't have any major huge capital investment, because you've made a point of saying, you know, how minimal the infrastructure here is to support this. So it's not like there's going to be a building there where you make a better argument for 10 years. But anyway, either way, I, I, I just wanted to raise that point. Is it your understanding, I mean, you're relatively new to this, but it was stated by Mr. Penley that this has essentially been used for this purpose for the last 22 years, is that?
Fascinating, isn't it? In fact, if I get it wrong, I mean, it kind of shake your head, but I grew up going to Miller's Woods, which is the baseball facility over 135th and Switzer. And, um, that's where I always went, and I think it goes back to 2001, the Miller family, and the idea of making a baseball, this, this, what's this, which, what we're looking on, we're looking on the screen in the site plan, so that his son's ball club could play there. And then fast forward, after all those years have been used that way, until 2017, when the Towns acquired it and then came for a CUP. So hopefully that answers your question. It's about 2001, which I think is what Sean said.
Was it during that period of time used essentially for what's being proposed now, or was there use different than somewhere?
I, I, I would say the same except for volume, right? These are two baseball and softball academies that have, you know, more, more teams and everything. But in the sense of, is it used for practices with a big ball and a little ball and a, you know, all of that sort of thing, it's, it's, it's the same. You know, we, we really don't do much hitting, um, over here on the field. I imagine maybe with only tiny little league people, they maybe did more of that, but I'm getting in the weeds, big picture. It was pretty much the same. We just have more, right? Because we're academies.
Okay, but here we're not talking about playing competitive games, right?
Yeah, I don't think they played competitive games. I think it was just practice. That's what I'm saying. I think it was really similar.
Now, what you're proposing is just training and.
Absolutely, just practice, training, period. No games, no tournaments, no nothing.
This is Kelly Rast. I.
Thank you.
I do appreciate your perspective on some of the stuff, um, of how you take, how you're looking at stuff. I mean, but at the end of the day, Coach Towns running a commercial business.
For sure, yeah.
Competitive baseball and softball team where kids try out.
Absolutely.
It's, it's basically a competitive, commercial business.
Hundred percent. It's well known and respected. I agree.
Yeah, so the other thing, I would be interested in going back and looking at our minutes from when we approved the building on Metcalf. Because I do believe, and you know, we'd have to look at the verbiage, but there were comments that people had asked that if this was approved, would you still be using? But it'd be interesting to go back and maybe we should, we should all go back and review those minutes and pull those up. And that may have been why, because I, I, I think that question was posed. I just don't know the verbiage of how it was posed, and obviously as an attorney, you know.
And you were there, right? So you may have a.
For the Metcalf, yeah. And so I'm kind of remembering the question being asked, that if this was, if this is approved, are you going to be still doing the death? Because there was the question, do you have enough fields in the back?
I looked at it quickly. I'm almost sure, again, we're probably not going to resolve it sitting right here. I'm almost sure it's the idea of facility. Yeah, we're not going to, yeah, sure, we're not going to need the facility, meaning two buildings. We're not going to need.
I'm remembering when we were questioning exactly like the amount of space for fields and how he was going to manage, the teams with the limited outdoor space he had at the thing. So I'm kind of remembering another part of it. I could be totally wrong, but like I said, I could be remembering part of it, but it doesn't necessarily refer to what we're saying.
Those are tiny fields over there, just you might remember that Metcalf, those are not fields you can even get in full.
Right, and that's why it, we were questioning like, and we brought up, well, and we were wondering, you know, would that be enough space? And so the question was posed, I believe, but we'll go back and look at that. And then my, I kind of have a different take on the fact that I know it's not being used all year round, but when you're talking a bunch of teenagers and congestion and concentration, that increases levels of risks. So I look at that more as a negative versus a positive of things being spread out when everybody's convening all at the same time. So that's not necessarily, you know, a po-, you know, a positive that it's only at, you know, certain times, because it's a lot of people at the same time. And then the other thing with the showcases, that really worries me. You're a Johnson County dad, you said it. Johnson County parents will show up if it's, it's going to be a showcase thing, and they think there's coaches. And so I have two D1 athletes. You're kidding yourself if you think that not everybody's going to be coming in and watching, you know, even when they hear a scout shows up at a, a high school baseball game, all of a sudden, there's a huge crowd. So I just feel like we need to be honest about all of this. And yes, it's not for the parents, but Johnson County parents literally go to Halloween parades. Like, you know, so this is, you're right, it's a huge deal.
Only thing really fast, if you don't mind, before you move on, and I mean this, all due respect to Coach Town. But I don't know if any of you have met Coach Town, and it wouldn't apply here, but it would be when he's on the baseball field and when he's directing everybody. If Coach Town, in managing all that, says that parents are not going to come to the showcase, parents are not going to come to the showcase. And I, again, there may be some people with firsthand knowledge to understand what I mean, and I, I really do mean that. So he is not going to run something that's not excellent.
And that's fine, and, but these might be all things that need to be stipulated and laid out very clearly, because I know Johnson County parents show up for far less, so.
The 120 was our attempt, as you guys talk amongst yourselves, and then, you know, dialogue with me if you don't want to. But the 120 was our olive branch to say, look, if we got to put something out there, let's talk about it.
Right, but I mean, we, and we have to be reasonable to think that, you know, there's people that linger, there's people that show up extra and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I remember when the facility was at the corner of Switzer, and there was backup on 159th and Switzer for kids getting in and out. And again, you have to remember, these are teenagers, they're checking their texts, they're checking what's going on. They're not always paying attention to, you know, the task at hand, which is driving or whatever, so.
You did check crash data, because in case your brain goes, or just get it out there. I should have said it in the form of the presentation, and there's really, there's no crash history, um, in this location. So I'm, I thought that was a blessing that there hasn't been issues, but I understand what you're saying.
Absolutely. No, I totally agree, and, and would like to keep it that way. Um, but like I said, if we're increasing numbers and events and stuff like that, you are increasing risk and possibility. So again, like I said, I appreciate your perspective on how you were looking at some key points, but we need to remember there's another side of that that can be looked at differently, and as zoning board members, we need to take all that in consideration. So, that's all.
Thank you, God. Any other questions, the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one follow-up. Uh, Mr. Peterson, and I would also direct this to Mr. Penley. What's the history during the period of time which your client has owned this property? What is the history of complaints, or whatever the reason may be, that you are aware of? And I'd ask, I'd ask you, Mr. Peterson, first, and then Mr. Penley, in case you're not aware of what he is.
So I, and I'm, I'm tying together my remarks, because I said a lot, I know, and I tried to go quickly and not, uh, drag everybody down. But, uh, we have never received formal complaints, other than what Mr. Penley said. Early on initially, people didn't understand the transition, and then also when we frankly didn't know and got notified that the CUP expired, we immediately turned around and filed. Other than that, we don't know of, of any other complaints filed with the county.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, um, what Sean Pendley planned to staff, I will note, since the CUP was approved in 2017, we look back to find a record of complaints. We had one, uh, neighbor with a complaint in 2017, right after the approval of the CUP, with, uh, the total number of athletes, what they estimated exceeded the 25. And so that's where we got into the discussion about the total numbers. And yeah, there was an overlap with the new team arriving, so there was more than 25 athletes. As we talked with the owner about how it was being run, that was the first complaint in 2017 since approval. Then in 2022, and, and this year, with repeated use of the facility after expiration of the CUP. Staff's not aware of any other specific complaints or violations for the CUP since that time, other than the public comments that came up in 2021, when the owner requested the amendment for the facility. They were, they were actually considering an amendment to the size and location of the building on Knoll. And that's where additional complaints came about, but that was a, based on a pending CUP amendment that the applicant later withdrew, withdrew, and then filed a new application.
I guess I should mention to you, I'm sorry, because I want to be complete, I'm processing the question. There was somebody that didn't like all this and filed a lawsuit, but the judge dismissed it all. So that wasn't through the county, but I want to be complete in my answer. That, I guess you could call that a complaint, but the judge said there wasn't any merit to it.
I guess, um, well, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of the board for the applicant? Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm going to go ahead and open up our, um, public comments. We've got some folks that had signed up to speak, as well as, believe we have some folks on Zoom, I saw hands rise. Uh, I did want to share that, uh, when speaking, please provide your full name and address for the record. If you share concerns or comments of something where someone has already commented, just reference agreement with their comments, um, as opposed to repeat those. And, um, we are, uh, public comments are limited to three minutes, uh, per person who's speaking. And we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, the first individual that signed up to speak is Don Vukos. Do you want to take, play him?
Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, I'd just give this one second, we'll get the timer up, and Amber, are you ready to go?
Okay.
Thank you. My concerns are, uh, like Mr. Towns has said in the last meeting.
You state your name and address.
Don Vukas, 5801 West 194th Street, uh, Stillwell, Kansas. Uh, one of his statements was, he sees tons of four-wheelers, ATVs, uh, Polaris's going around all over that place. So yes, when you have 2,000 plus cars, kids, everybody's driving around now, that's going to put a lot of people at risk, just on that. Our community has a lot of horses, people ride horses around that area a lot. Uh, there are no sidewalks, there are no pullovers. And I believe, uh, Dan Foilright. Coming down 100, you've been out there, coming down 191st Street, or even come back from the field. There is a hill and there's a crevice of that neighborhood right there. So when they come over, as soon as you hit that crest, boom, you're, you're at that intersection, not the intersection, but his entrances facility. And coming back, once you crevice over that hill, you're right there where that neighborhood is. You're going to have problems. So that's another danger right there. So, uh, also on the, uh, having the, uh, vacating the facility, if they put the building there at Knoll, they're going to have that and two fields. That's it. So they decided to build up there, and they'll say they have a building and two fields. So of course they knew that they were going to vacate Knoll area. So, uh, that's, that's about it that I have for now.
Thank you. Our second speaker is. Our second speaker is.
Hi, I'm Vincent Stoddenmeyer. I live at 5828 West 194th Street, about 500 yards or so from the ball field. Just a couple of qualifications. Uh, I have no vested interest. In, in the property or anything having to do with the property. Number two, I'm also not the person. Our home is not the closest to that facility. There are several homes that are closer. So, uh, there could be evidence of some kind or another that, uh. Would, would not be the same as mine. So i- in my mind, this is just a very simple thing for us. Not necessarily for anyone else here. And that is the question for the time that the ball field has been utilized. That we have been living in that, uh, in that home. Has the use of the facility had any? Negative impact? To our lifestyle? That can be directly attributed? To the activity at that ball field. So that's the only question that, that matters to me at the moment. Just for me personally. And, and the answer for me. My, my whole professional career has been based on data and evidence. For over 35 years. And so I just look at stuff as objectively as I can. And I can't see anything at a personal level. At an evidentiary level that. Would suggest that it has changed anything for our lifestyle. So I'm not opposed to the board granting, uh, that application. I might add that there are others here that believe completely opposite of what I believe. So. That can be an interesting discussion, but that's all I have to say. And thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask him a question real quick? Is that allowed or not? Uh, so. You're on 194th Street. So that backs. That's the road, the neighborhood that backs up to the property then, right? To, it should be to the south of the property in question. Is that correct?
Our, our land is, it's five acres. It does not abut. On the, the north end of our property to the south. Portion of, of the Coach Town's property.
Okay.
There, there's an offset there of about, I don't know, 300 yards maybe. So we're not directly south, but the Huskies are directly south. Uh, the, the Vukas's are, um. South, southwest across 194th Street. So if that helps you.
That does. Thank you. I was just trying to visualize where you.
Do you utilize 191st though for in and out to your residence?
194th.
Okay. So 194th is.
Right. We're on 194th Street.
Okay. So you don't go on 190.
Uh, only when I want to go around the block for some strange reason. Any other questions?
So does that neighborhood come in off of Lamar right there then? Let me.
Uh, I'm sure, um, I'm not sure I understand.
You come off of Lamar. So you're north, south to go to 191st Street. Let's say you'd go Lamar.
If I were going to go to 191st, I would head west on 194th and then north on Walmer.
Okay, got you. Okay, I see it. Sorry.
No.
Thank you.
I can see a question in your mind, in your eyes there.
Well, I'll go back to my, I, I harping on this a little bit, but you live in the area. Do you have, have, have you made enough observations in your time there? And how long have you lived there, did you say?
It's, it's a longer story than that. Uh, my wife and I were caretakers for her father, uh, for about six years and, and I spent my. The, during the week in, in, in that residence while I worked here in town.
And, and you may not be in a position, I was curious as to what your personal impression was of how busy 191st Street is with traffic and that.
I'm not sure I would be the best person to comment on that. Uh, I have had some occasions where I've. Intervened in situations where people were driving far too fast on 194th. But I could not attribute those incidents to anything having, anything associated with the academy.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Greg Dean. You can state your name and address.
I just want to add one thing. There is someone else here that wanted to say something, but the sign up sheet had been taken away.
Oh, we'll go ahead and add it.
I'm Greg Dean. I live at 5921 West 194th Street, which 194th Street is the first east west street immediately south of this property. I live about two tenths of a mile west of Noll. So. I'm not exactly on this, on the property like the Scanlins or the Huskies are. Uh, but it does, it's my neighborhood and they're my neighbors and I feel sorry for them. Uh, I don't have time to cover everything that I want to cover here. So I'm going to have to rely on you guys and your. Common sense about some of this. But first I want to point out that I did bring the. Application for the CUP that's 23137. I'd ask you all to review that. That's the Metcalf. Portion of this enterprise. And the very first page of that ends with the statement. If approved, and this is the proposal that was made. By. Luke Town and Advanced Baseball Academy. If approved, the proposed CUP will replace the existing athletic facility. And the applicant will vacate the site on Noll Avenue. That's what we were told. Uh, I believe that's probably what you were told. And, uh, that just didn't happen. So. You understand that when the, um. Report of the August 15th meeting with the townspeople indicates that. Individuals, uh, when they were told that that wasn't true, that that wasn't going to be vacated. Became frustrated. And confused. And now it's putting it mildly. So anyway, we're. Kind of emotional about this in some regards and probably shouldn't be. I want to emphasize the character of this business. At that meeting on August 15th, Coach Town. Indicated that he had 400 clients for his. Operation. I asked him what he charged them. And he said it varies, but for a 14-year-old, he charges $2,400 a year for that. So doing the math, I multiplied 2,400 by 400 and you know, it's close to a million dollars of income. So it's not like he's doing a Mother Teresa job there. This is a enterprise. And it should be treated like an enterprise and it. And the only other thing I want to say in 25 seconds is that I have, um. Respectfully disagreements with the staff with regard to the golden. Factors that they took into consideration. I don't think the applicant could ever prove that. Our quiet little neighborhood is of a character that a. A baseball operation would not, wouldn't disrupt. Uh, it doesn't fit in with the character of our neighborhood. I don't think the applicant could ever prove that the zoning as it exists now is appropriate for his operation. Or that the, the uses of the property nearby are similar or in any way appropriate for this kind of an application. I don't think he can show any. Damage for us enforcing the existing zoning here. There are two tracts of land, one on each side of his Metcalf operation that would be ideal for this adjacent. That all he has to do is acquire one of those tracks and. I'm, I'm out of time.
You're out of time. If you have a final comment.
I don't know. Just. Do the best you can on this, but this is, this is, I, I have responses for all of this stuff. There's, there is no. Justification for. Using this. And, and that when this prop, when I've lived there 33 years. When this property began, they did draw out a little field there for. One family to play on. That was what they did. And that's all it was used for, for all those years. It wasn't until the operation that's now there that it became a commercial enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Question, uh, Mr. Dean. At the beginning of your presentation, you said you. You do feel sorry for, I guess, I thought you said the, uh.
The Scanlins and the Huskies who live. Like from here to the window from a bunch of, it's like a, like a. Pool party in somebody's backyard every night. It's, those kids are. Noisy, they're bolsterous, they're having a good time.
So. Is, is the noise issue the reason that you feel sorry for them?
Yes, the noise and the disruption. Every night until the sun goes down. They're out on their decks or the patios or in their yards. Sharing our little neighborhood with all these kids. And, and I have an entirely different view of athletics at this level and how beneficial it is for kids. I don't. I'm jaundiced on that. But. They have a right to have a good time and I understand all that. They just probably shouldn't be doing it in our neighborhood.
I'm trying to, to, to discern. From you and others that have commented and whoever may comment. Really what the issue is with the use. That's proposed. Is it noise? Is it traffic? Is it, what is it? And I, I'm hearing noise as being the number one issue.
It is, it is noise. It is, um. To a certain extent, traffic. There's a. I, I'm not sure they have sanitary. Facilities there. Uh, this is just a lot of kids and a lot of commotion. People coming in and in and out.
So you've lived there for how long? 30?
33.
And have you had the opportunity to observe? I mean, you've been there near this. Apparently this thing's been in operation in some fashion since 2001. Has this been true throughout that period or what's the difference?
No, no, no. From 2001 till 2017. It was a family, basically. They, they, one boy played. Ball and they, they'd bring his friends out to play. Almost never saw anybody there, never had an issue at all. It wasn't until it became a commercial enterprise that it became a problem.
Okay.
And, and I, I'm quite a ways away. So I can't, it's not a personal complaint for me. I just don't want my neighborhood and my neighbors to be. Imposed on.
Last question, um, you've lived there quite a while. Have you had enough of an opportunity to observe 191st Street traffic to form an opinion? As to it's just how busy it is?
I have not. Uh, there was a, a death, uh, at the intersection there. Few years ago, intersection collision. Young girl was killed. But I don't think it's busy at all. And I walk up and down there every once in a while. I'm surprised that there are 2,000 cars a day.
Why, yes. All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Our next speaker will be, uh, Mr. Iliff, Chris.
My name's Chris Iliff. My address is 17200 Canterbury Drive, Stillwell, Kansas, 66085. I served on this zoning board for 28 years. And there were certain cases. That we would call no brainers. And while I won't say this fits exactly into that category. When it comes to the renewal of a conditional use permit. The first thing you always look at is have there been complaints? There have not in this case. And that tells you a lot. The second thing you do is you say, well, if they made it five years with no complaints. Wouldn't it be stupid to impose upon them another five years when all they're asking for is 10 years? And I think that it makes a lot of sense to just give them a 10-year lease. On a conditional use permit. And take into account that there's been no accidents, there's been no complaints. And we've heard the positive things. That this offers to our community. And I think it would be a huge mistake. To shut this down. And lastly, I'll just. Say in, in retrospect, or I, I heard on a number of occasions when I sat on the zoning board. People say, well, gee, they're going to make money doing this. Isn't that awful? Thank God. People are making money in Stillwell and doing and bringing into the community. The, the benefits that that money brings to a community. That is an argument that. Should not be heard. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Iliff, if you don't mind. That said, uh, what is, as a resident out there, if you were going to approve this. Would you put a cap on the number of people that? Would be there or could be there as opposed to what they're proposing of X number of athletes without referencing how many other people could be there?
Well, I, I think the answer to that has to be, you can only control the number of athletes. Um, Ms. Rass's comments about helicopter parents, uh, has some. Validity to it. Um, but I think that the coach through his, Mr. Peterson is made it clear that he's in control. And he's going to make sure that only the number that he wants there are going to be there. If they exceed that, then somebody needs to file a complaint. And then it needs to be enforced by the. Stipulations in the conditional use permit. If they violate that, then. You know, that's, that's on them. That's on the applicant. But if the applicant is disciplined about seeing to it that the number of athletes is limited to what he said in his application. I think it would be wrong to. Penalize him or certainly turn this, this down.
How long have you lived in the area?
Forty years.
So you've had an opportunity to, and I'll ask you the same question I asked Mr. Dean. Have you, are you in a position to form an opinion as to the relative busyness, if I can use the word of 191st Street?
191st Street is one of the lightest traveled east-west roads in that part of the county. I almost never encounter any kind of traffic on there at all. Uh, and it's a, it's a great road. I will take it. In preference to 159th, 175th turning, or 179th turning into 175th, or certainly 199th Street. Uh, if I want to get over to Metcalf, I want to take 191st because it's the quickest way to get there with no traffic. And, and by the way, the, the reference to the accident at 190, 191st and Noll. Was a drunk driver in the middle of the night who didn't miss the stop sign and killed a girl has nothing to do with anything.
Last question. With reference to. 190, 191st Street, the traffic report. And I realize they probably just pulled this off of a. Of an estimate, but they're suggesting. 2,100 and some odd number of cars per day on 191st Street. I'm just trying to get my head around that at that location. It seems pretty high.
I don't think that's true. I don't think that's accurate, but even if it were true, that's not much traffic for a street that's built like that.
Sure. All right. Thank you very much.
If anyone on Zoom that has their hand raised to speak.
All right. The first person that we have is Marina Huska. And Marina, you should be able to speak. Just go ahead and unmute yourself. Marina, you are allowed to speak. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. Hi, my name is Marina Huska and I live at 19340 Noll Avenue out in Stillwell. And my husband and I, my property does butt right up next to, um, the property there where, um, the baseball academy. CUP is being proposed. I sent a, a pretty lengthy, um. Document in that you guys, um, I believe have, um, concerning, um. Concerning the neighborhood and the, um. Preserving of. Our precious neighborhood that we have in Stillwell. And I was going to read what I wrote, but you guys already have all that. Um, my, my point is, and please tell me if I'm getting long on time because I'm referring to my notes. Um. A long time ago, we've been out there for a long, long time, the family has. And that baseball facility now back in 2001 or whenever it was bought by the Millers was used for just. Some kids. Family baseball practice. It did not, was not a business at all until the conditional use permit was, um, applied for. And. Back to, um. Back to um my reference of um the CUP on that document, that letter from staff. It did. We thought it was over. We thought it was over. He withdrew the application to renew it. The building wasn't going to work there. He bought the other facility, put two fields in. And we were under the impression that that facility was going to close. And now here we go again. We're spending time, money. On trying to, trying to keep our community out of a business environment. And I just think that it's been, it was rejected so many times by the local county commissioners that it's. And it, and then all of a sudden it got approved. And I still really honestly do not understand why. People live out there for a reason. And it, we have been dealing with traffic, dust, safety, noise, health, property values. And incurring expenses trying to stick together as a community against the CUP. I have nothing against baseball. I have nothing against the facility on Metcalf, but this place is not the right place for a business. I'm concerned about our property values, the noise. If you were living there, you would hear it. You'd hear the kids. Yelling and screaming, the coaches saying, run, run, run. You'd hear the bats going tink, tink, tink. And there is batting practice out there because I hear it several nights a week when I'm outside. And I do agree with um Mr. Dean. I do agree with Donnie. And um there is a lot of traffic on one hundred and ninety-first street because there's a lot of people from Missouri that come across. And then you need to take into consideration what's going to happen when more houses are built towards state line. Um, I'm not sure how much time I have left.
Misses, you you've actually run out of time, but if you want to have a final comment?
Well, I I just want to say that that we have nothing against baseball, but he's got the facility on Metcalf and we all honestly thought. Based on that document that it was over and that that property was to be vacated. And I guess that about sums it up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
What else do we have on Zoom?
We have an Angie. I'm sorry, I'm not going to pronounce this, pronounce this right. Abueli. Angie, you are now able to speak. You just need to unmute, um unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Angie Buehle. I live at fifty-seven thirty-two West one ninety-fourth Street in Stillwell. I am neighbors with Marina Huska. My property also backs up to. The property for the proposed CUP. I agree with everything that Marina Huska has stated. I have lived here nearly forty years. My um, I would also like to say that I agree with Mr. Dean. I do have occasion to travel one hundred and ninety-first street. Because I travel that way when I travel over to Missouri, which I do quite often. As it's an easier route for me to travel sometimes instead of going Interstate four thirty-five. And um, there is a lot of Missouri traffic that travels that way. And um, I also see a lot of traffic coming home that way. From work, from here in Kansas. So there is a lot of traffic that travels back and forth that way. So there, I. Um, disagree with um the other gentleman who said there is not traffic on that road. And there is a couple of blind spots that are evident when. Um, you come over those hills, especially when the sun is at certain angles. Also, people turn onto Noll from one hundred and ninety-first street and that is a hazardous intersection. So there is some um. There is some investigation required there for the traffic study. I don't believe that. Um, there's only two thousand cars that travel that way a day. In addition, this has been a very nice, quiet neighborhood. And while I understand Mr. Town's appreciation for the youth and baseball. I just do not see that this neighborhood is the right fit. For a continuation of his commercial business that he has running in a commercial area on Metcalf. Even though he says that this is a commercial area out here because of the power and light and the railroad. The Power and Light Company is a utility. And there is no other commercial zoning around here. And we have a quiet neighborhood and we would like it to remain that way. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Angie. Anyone else we have on Zoom?
Those were the only two that wrote, that uh rose their hands, raised their hand.
All right. If anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, just raise your hand. And is there anyone else um here with us today that would like to speak?
Good day, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and thank you for your service. My name's Dave Webb. I live at forty-eight fifteen West one hundred and ninety-first street. We own the property directly to the east of the subject property and also used to have the property to the north. Uh, addressing it as to the East zoning board is a little di- difficult. My mother was a founding member of the Aubrey Township Zoning Board. To hear it to change to East is a little difficult. The Mr. Staudemire, when he spoke, this fa- this property used to be part of their family farm back in the sixties. Uh, Mr. Miller bought the east portion of that in the seventies when he moved out up off one hundred and eighty-third street and he excavated for Phil around his house. And then turned it into a baseball complex. I will tell you that there's been tractor pulls at this site. There's been mud runs at this site. There has been other activities at this site, but he also built a baseball field and I, we could tell you from living there in my entire lifetime. That there have been thousands of kids who's played on that field over that period of time. We use metal bats today, not wood bats today, so the sound is different. Yes, when we're out on our deck or on our patio and when you, when we live north of there, you can hear the crack of the bat or the ping of the bat. And the excitement that happens after that. And I can guarantee you, I'd much rather hear that than. Other activities that could take place there. So they do a good job. We have no complaints with them. We've uh back when the Millers owned it. Back when all the other activities were held there for community events or fundraisers for civic clubs in the area. It has always worked well. There's never been a an accident there. I support this uh uh. Endeavor that they're doing a hundred percent. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have not seen, uh, oh, I would also say that obviously um. One hundred and ninety-first street and one hundred and eighty-third street going north are all paved today. I would tell you that I'm the one that carried the petitions for the county to get all those paved. The paving stopped at Heritage and it was gravel from there on over to Mission Road and gravel north up to uh one hundred and eighty-third street. So. I did carry those for the county and we got all those paved. They did say that they would. Once we got those three done, they do the Noll one. Something happened and Noll still isn't paved, so.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, ma'am.
You're on one ninety-first and east.
Just to the east of it. Pardon? Our property starts at Noll.
Okay.
Other side of the road before the railroad tracks.
Yeah, okay.
And the other side of the railroad track.
Yeah.
And the ra- the railroad track splits our property.
Okay, yeah. So like, you don't really butt up, but you're the next property, potential property over.
Kelly, can you speak into the microphone for me, please?
My bad, sorry. Uh, yeah, so you're the next property.
Owner to the east.
To the east, but you don't necessarily touch property lines?
Yes.
They do?
Well, there's a road between us.
Just, yeah.
They're on the other side of Noll.
Okay, yeah, I know. On the other side of Noll.
Noll runs north and south.
Yes.
They're on the west side of Noll. We're on the east side of Noll.
Yeah, so you're on the other side of Noll.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else here like to speak or make comment? Please, sir.
Hi, I'm uh Ryland Griffin. I live at five five zero one West Hundred and Fourth Street. So I'm just south of one hundred and ninety-fourth street and Noll. Um, I just say I'm college athlete. I really appreciate everything that towns are doing and everything. I love the facility and all that stuff and everything else going on there. I think my concern is more on the safety aspect. Or like driving and all that stuff, like the public works maybe could do a little bit better work, maybe like uh. Dave Webb was talking about with getting that road paved on Noll because that's a really hazardous road. I've been, I've lived there since two thousand and seventeen and I'm pretty sure every year there has been an accident at one hundred and ninety-fourth and Noll. Because Noll goes south and right when it gets one hundred and eighty-fourth, it veers about twenty degrees, maybe thirty, something like that. And there's always people flying on that road and miss. And it's usually right at dusk and, you know, nine, ten, even later because it's so dark. And I'm just worried about his kids, other kids, four wheels. I've helped golf carts. That kids have flipped right there on the corner. I've seen police cars, accidents. So I think my concern is more on the safety aspect and what we could do on that. On that aspect because I think that's with more traffic and more people and more coming in and out, I just would hate for one of those kids or somebody just take a left. Side come down. I know we could put up signs everywhere and that'd be great, but there is a lot of traffic and I do know, I I personally do think that there is like two thousand cars. Traffic on one hundred and ninety-first, especially in those peak hours in the mornings when people going to and from work, coming up, especially between Metcalf and Noll. Like when you go west on one hundred and ninety-first past Metcalf, there's not as much traffic. It's a pretty easier drive. But right there, there's a lot of like construction and work trucks that come down Metcalf and they turn one hundred and ninety-first to head that way if they're not taking one hundred and eighty-third. So I could see two thousand cars or plus being there. I just, just again, it's the traffic aspect that I just worry about for the sapiens of everybody. So, and that's kind of right. And so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, I, uh, Rod Richardson, I, my, I've lost track of exactly where you live relative to the site.
Um, south of the Huskas. So they live directly south of them and then I live directly south of them, just across one hundred and ninety-fourth.
Okay. And and you're, and you lived there since two thousand and seventeen. What's your? What can you tell us about noise from the facility that's been an issue here with other folks?
I mean, you can hear it, but again, to me, that doesn't bother me at all. Being a college athlete, it's just baseball's cracks and bats. So like. Again, I'm just more worried about vehicles and people peeling out and stuff, you know, because. Like Dawn said, there's no sidewalks, there's no curbs, there's nothing. So like, if a car comes flipping and turning and driving, you know, you got to get out of the way. Um, I do know back in twenty twenty-one, there was a truck that came barreling down Noll. They turned, you know, I got their attention because I happened to be out there and I asked him to slow down a little bit, you know, he just flipped me off and kept going. I don't know where he came from or anything, but I I remember the truck because it was a Toyota Tacoma, which that's what I drive. It was gray. And then one day when I was driving to work, because I work in Lathon, one hundred and seventy-ninth, I saw that exact same truck flipped over on the side. So. I do know there's, you know, I'm just worried. So, and I have helped kids up with like their golf carts and pull their four-wheelers out of the ditch and the corners down there and stuff. But I do know right there, kids like to go down and play around and all that stuff for kids, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Anyone else before we close the public comment section? All right, then I'm going to go ahead. Um, close the public comments. Um, I'll apologize to staff. I know that uh. Other, with with folks coming out, I know I went over the three minutes and I know we're asking questions of those that are speaking, but I think our board. Really evaluate, appreciates the folks coming out and I want to make sure they're heard and make sure that we have a time to have a little exchange. So I know that's not customary and. And possibly uncomfortable, but I want to make sure just to explain my reason for allowing us to go over and talk to folks, especially now if we're just on the east side. It's not as much of an area, so it's much more intimate um in my mind. Um, before we continue, we want to take a five-minute break, if we can do that, and then resume back here in five minutes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I don't know if he's, where he's going. Roger. Question.
You know. I tell you what, I I'm adding up the positives and negatives here and there. It's pretty even. I can see various arguments and things. Would I want to live next to it?
No, I don't want a metal bat.
You know, but. History there. Et cetera. I think he shot himself in the foot, let's say, and then shut it down. So it looks like kind of an.
That's, I agree with Kelly. He was, he was living in.
It's, I don't know how much money he's saving.
I think make money, I think the hours is one of the big factors, the long hours. Um, that's, you just hear baseball going and really. One of the questions.
Maybe.
Well, listen, I want to hear what everybody else on the board has to say. I'm, I'm right on the fence. I mean, I could, I could read compelling argument.
I think. I've, I've been over there.
I drove up, I drove over there today, like both my wife and I. We drove past the No Chris Pass and so I went up.
Oh, yeah, we went up and.
And looked around and I thought.
I think some Lance could be here.
Yeah, this looks pretty raw, but you know, it's one of those things where it's like. They're, they're, couldn't see anybody anywhere near.
That's it? Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we've probably beat it to death. I think, you know, the the issue with the B O C C is going to be. You know, do we consider the benefit to people that have kids to outweigh the detriment to the people that live there?
No, I don't think so.
But I, no.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, I'd be like, no, the correct answer to that question because and and all the stuff we've been doing on one hundred and ninety-ninth street. The capacity on that was, I don't have this crap with me. I had it right on my desk at home and I thought I'll never need that for this. Why would I bring? But at the capacities, I thought, and if I go home and look at it at this point in my life, I may have said, oh, crap, I was totally wrong. But it was like, it was less than three thousand trips per day and they were, and Brian, and Brian Peating was saying. One hundred and ninety-ninth was over capacity twenty years ago and the capacity at that point was about twenty-six hundred trips per day.
I remember that when we were talking about it before.
Nah, they haven't. Now they haven't.
No businesses.
They're, they're working on it now, but they're putting some, trying to put some.
My kids are perfect.
I, I, I didn't the one that gave them all those pictures of those trucks flipped over on there, you know? But you know, since I've done some of the work, nobody's been in the niche since they did the rumble strips. Finished. I'm happy with it not being.
They're right here.
But it's, it's. Two or three of them on my.
Let me get the message when I was leaving. Don't hit anybody, Dad. I, I know you can do it. I know you can do it. Thank you.
He must have listened to you.
It is. It needs to, they need to do, they had, you know, that was supposed to be made just like one hundred and seventy-ninth, one hundred and seventy-fifth. And then in the, in like twenty, twenty-one years ago, they took that money and put it over on the intermodal. Well, that's all I need to do with it now, but they don't have the money to do it. So, you know, you gotta, in the meantime, I said, well, you gotta do something. Why, somebody's going to kill that here. Oh, there's, you know, they're building, hell, they're, they got, they're building subdivisions on both sides of the road, all the way from one hundred and sixty-nine to. And they're building houses that are selling, or the lots are six, seven hundred thousand dollars for the frigging lot. So those people have money to say, no, you don't. Yes.
Oh, I just.
I saw that.
That is the most, yeah. Yeah, I can't figure that out either in my. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's that, that's.
Is that Overland Park or Spring Hill?
Spring Hill, I think it's Spring Hill.
Spring Hill then?
And I'm thinking.
No, I drove, I, I drove by there. I saw it today.
Yeah. Wow, but it is quite a shock to the eye in the senses to see, as I drove by those, I thought, I thought, what in the?
Well, they're, you can see them from the south side of one hundred and sixty-nine.
Yeah, that's where I came out.
I can't believe that.
But is that spring, you think that's Spring Hill?
You know, at least that reminds me of military base housing. It does look like military housing.
It does.
Just moving.
In, oh, in this, coming right.
It is. I wondered whether I.
Thanks.
We've got to build everything that's got dirt on it eventually.
Do we have questions for staff anymore? We're just.
To the issue.
All right, I'm gonna put you on the spot to put your comments on the table. I said I'm gonna call you on the spot, put your comments on the table.
I comment?
Each of us.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm for it too, but I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind doing away with. Can he, can he do that over at his other facility? And how about? If you're living there.
Yes, I thought, yeah, I thought that was a win for all of us that we did good and we got it in the right place.
Well, I think it's, I do think it's reasonable to ask what happened.
Like the drain I hear.
I can make a lot of money down here.
Baylor about six months ago says dead. I don't know what it is. The last couple nights I've heard a rattling on those windows over there. He like watching TV in the basement. Brandon's like, you need to go down, figure out what's going on. I was like, really? I was like, now what happens? Every once in a while, I just hear rattling. It's been two nights in roads on those windows over there in the basement. I'm like. Hey bud, we live.
All right, we're, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. And we just finished, uh, closing the public comments and, um. Is there any other additional questions of the zoning board staff that we have before we go on? Seeing none. Um, we'll go ahead and have, um, discussion amongst ourselves as a zoning board and we'll just go down the list if you will. And we'll start with Fred and what's your thoughts?
So I, I like the mission that, um, this organization does. I, I think it's admirable. Um, I think kids playing sports is good. Um, I'm not sure about the showcase events. Um, it, you know, it seems like. Um, the mission can be accomplished. We have another facility that can do that. Um, I think they've had a good long record. We have another entrance into the, our area that wants to do a baseball facility. That's already had multiple complaints in a very short period of time and doesn't even have approval. Um, I think their track record has been good. Um, I'd be open to the other people's feedback on the number of people that are on the property. And potentially, um, more of us, I guess, seven P M cutoff time in the evening. Um, nine o'clock seems a little late. Um, trying to balance some of the concerns that neighbors have. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks.
So, uh, Dan Foyle, um, so I live very close to a baseball facility right now that, that was recent. I, I actually am about, by my calculation, about four hundred and fifty feet from, uh, the facility just down one hundred ninety first street. I back up to the corner of one hundred ninety first admission. And so I'm, I'm familiar with the, the, the baseball noise. Um, I will say that now that my son plays baseball a little bit, I, I find it a little more. Less irritating, I guess, is what I would put it, but, but I'd also say that, um, I, you know, I've, before one hundred eighty third street. Opened up, I've driven down one hundred ninety first a gazillion times. Um, I have never thought of, is it a high traffic? Area, um, you know, I, I mentioned a little bit about the, the, you know, the one time I saw a kid kind of pulling out and looking and. And I thought it was because he might not be able to see. I thought there was a banner on the, on the fence or something at that time, but I may have been mistaken. Um, but I've also, I, I appreciate the mission that you have and how you help the kids and especially with some of the mental. Uh, health issues that kids are having in, in the area. Um, I've always, you know, still well and, you know, I eat jalapenos and all those places a lot. It's very close knit community. I've always found the, uh, ABA kids to be very, very respectful. Uh, no offense, but so are the building champions kids too, but you know that. But, uh, but I've always found that when these kids are playing these team sports, they seem to have a little bit, uh, a little more discipline sometimes. Um, I've never noticed again, too much traffic and I know as a coach, uh, you, you're in tune with the parents and you, you probably want the kids' safety more than anything. So I would, uh, I am for this. Uh, I would like to see maybe us discuss some caps on the number of kids that, or the number of people that could be there. Cause like you said, like, you know, uh, Kelly brought up, there's, you know, some of those parents that are gonna want to be there. And I think that is something that you can handle as a, as a coach, but I also think it's something that if you have a. An actual limit behind you, it's easier to talk to the parents about it and, and make it enforceable, in my opinion. Um. You know, and again, I live at that intersection. I would say that as a, as a, as a coach that cares for your kids and their safety, I would say the two big things that I would like for you to stress is. The hundred ninety first and Mission intersection, you know, the cross traffic does not stop this way. And I, I've lived there, you know, coming up eight years, I guess, is, and I've, and when I first moved there, there was nine wrecks in four weeks. That intersection, because the people are not paying attention and they roll through that intersection and they don't realize that the north, south. Traffic doesn't stop and somebody gets hit. Now they've, they've adjusted it. They put up bigger signs. They've done that. And I sit in my backyard and watch, you know, seven or eight cars a day run it anyway. Now, they don't happen to be timed with another car coming the other way. So that's, but, but as a coach and somebody cares about your kids, I'd say. You know, a stop sign, maybe reminding them, hey, you're in a rural neighborhood. There's other people out. You know, and, and just remember to treat that one hundred ninety first and Mission intersection like a, like a four way stop sign and, and be careful. And I know you care for your kids and obviously you want to do the right thing and, and I think just, you know, I wouldn't call it a safety briefing, but just, just reminding them that. That this isn't, you know, while it is in the country, there is, there's risks as well. So, but, uh, other than, you know, those thoughts, I've. I'd like to see maybe, uh, you know, if you think about a cap. Um, and then the, 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 the one that's right by me, they, their limit is, uh, I don't remember what time it is and how many kids or whatever. But, uh, they play till dark and I think the biggest thing is if you agree to something, make sure you enforce it and keep an eye on it. So nobody has to complain. Cause we, no, none of us want to see you come back here again either, so.
Great, thanks. Um, Ken Klingon Smith, couple, couple thoughts is, um, I'm in agreement with Kelly that. I thought they were gonna vacate the property. Um, it was sort of in our memos back in, um, June. I was not supportive of the renewal back then. Um, only because of the building, the Noll traffic. It was, it was just, and it was gonna be a significant commercial business there. Um, my goal is to figure out a way to make things work. Um, I think parking is a concern that we want to address. Um, I live out there. I, I've seen. Folks parking in the grass, going up to the, you know, the fence on the side of the fence, just because. Uh, folks aren't parking close together and like you normally would park. So I just think when you start looking at showcase events and you start getting the number of, um. Folks that are driving out there, I just, I just think we need to make sure we address that and, and have a good solution for that. Um, I am concerned about the showcase events and having additional athletes there. Um, I'm not opposed to the showcase. I'm not opposed to actually the concept of this at all. I just think the volume and the number of people and the hours and, um. That component is, how, how do we keep this being more of a community field, if you will, not, it's a bad way to say it, but. Not turn it into the commercial business and figure out a way to, through some of the stipulations, we can get this passed.
Uh, Rod Richardson, well, um. Throughout this, I've been writing down the positives and the negatives of this, and I think one thing is, is crystal clear at this point. I don't think. Anything we could do. Short of simply denying this would satisfy the concerns of the closest neighbors. For perfectly appropriate reasons for them. They don't like the noise. They don't like, don't like it being there. By the same token, um, this applicant, uh, is coming off of a conditional use permit. That was approved there, uh, for some time. So, and plus it has a history before that going back some distance. We've heard, uh, eight people talk about this and it was kind of a split. There were a couple more opposed, but. Couple of the opposed were mainly for traffic reasons as opposed to fundamental reasons against the, the use. So. I wouldn't say it's a toss up, but it, it wasn't completely one sided. So on the positive side, um, you know, for the applicant, there's a twenty two year history here. Uh, but it is unfortunate and I, I don't know. I mean, I'm looking at this, uh. June thirtieth, twenty twenty one statements as if approved, the proposed C U P will replace the existing athletic facility. And the applicant will vacate the site on all avenue following completion of the new facility. That is a concern because it was certainly a representation that I assume people took into account when they approved that. Uh, I would call that a negative. Uh, but on the other hand, the positive, it's a, it's a, it's a rural type use. Baseball is clearly a rural type use. Anybody that's seen Field of Dreams or hit a baseball, know it's. It's, it's perfectly appropriate, uh, in a rural area, uh, as a, as a simple use. Uh, setting aside the intensity of it. Uh, they've eliminated the building, uh, that could have been there. Which would have made this much more intense and much longer, uh, potential use there. They've eliminated any lighting, which would be a, a showstopper for me. Um, they want a ten year C U P. I don't believe I could support that under any circumstances. This is a guest use. You start adding ten years out to these C U Ps and it becomes a de facto rezoning of the thing, I think, in my opinion. I'm sure others would disagree. A shorter term C U P would be of interest to me. Um. It's certainly now much lower intensity, as I said, than what the original use was proposed. Uh, but without a cap on the number of people there, it could very quickly, uh, grow out of control. So. Without some sort of a cap on the total number of people there to force the owner to, to keep the brakes on. That both for not only who's there, the noise that, that those folks would generate. But also the traffic in and out of there, which is clearly an, an open issue. I think there's got to be some reasonable limits, uh, on it. I do think on a positive side, the elevations help. I was out there today and walked the entire site and quite frankly, and, and you know, when you initially walk in there without having any idea what it sounds like. Or what goes on there, you could say, how could anybody oppose this? You can't even see anybody else from that site. But I understand that in the country, because I live in the country, uh, the issue of, um, you know, how many D Bs is it? Is vastly more impactful in the country than it is in the city. And, um, I know for a fact that when people say, well, it, you know, it didn't exceed eighty D Bs, you know, eighty D Bs at seventy fifth and Metcalf. Is a lot different than eighty D Bs at one hundred ninety ninth and Metcalf. It's just a huge difference. So noise in the country. Uh, and how it carries is something that, that is worth, uh, significant consideration. Another reason to limit the number of people there. Um, there's minimal infrastructure there, um. So, you know, it's a, a very light use of the facility. It's only in use six months a year. As I understand it, there's no games. It seems to be reasonable screening and not an unreasonable. I mean, there's a pretty significant distance to, to residences. Unfortunately, that doesn't stop the sound going. Uh, and there are virtually no complaints that we've heard of, uh, over the long space of time here. So. Uh, I think the real issue is we just, there's some folks that just don't want it there and, and I fully understand their reasoning. They did a superb job of, of laying that out. The question I think for us is, is that, is that reason for opposition enough to tell this applicant, uh, no? On the negative side, uh, very quickly, the noise travels, uh, and some attention is going to have to be paid. And I think that goes back to the number of people there and staying true to, uh, you know, what this is. I, I think, um. There is a danger of people overload. That goes back to putting a number on there. This question of the traffic burden, I really would like to hear more information on that. Uh, if, if the. It doesn't appear that's that busy of a street, but we've had conflicting people say what it is. The report says there's twenty three hundred plus cars there per day, which is astonishing to me. Uh, but that runs right into a four hundred car per day, uh, on Noll. So I would like to hear more from public works frankly on what, um, you know, the additional traffic in this area. Might do in terms of creating a potential traffic hazard. Um, I'm also concerned about the hours of operation only in this regard. I don't know. I assume they shut down at sundown. Sundown goes quicker in April than it does at the end of the, of summer. But closing at nine P M, I'm concerned about that because you know how it is, uh, the show's over, so to speak, but people linger and talk. Particularly in the summer, it's nice, uh, uh, you know, and you may not be out of there till ten or eleven. And I think, I think really there's some consideration should be made to, to shutting it down at eight o'clock. So people can be really clear out of there. Uh, that way, um, uh, you don't have to worry about the, the lingerers, if you will. I think there needs to be some kind of traffic control of people exiting this. Simple stop sign might do it. Uh, I have, I share the concern of our chairman, uh, regarding parking adequacy, um, given this, I think that needs to be looked at. And I do fully agree with others, the skills education. I agree, you know, and Mr. Ilof's comment and others that supported this. Uh, this is a very valuable use for a, 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 a very valuable thing to do for the kids. Particularly that are interested in, in baseball, in a, in a higher end sports, um, uh, education. Uh, the only question is, is the, is this the right place for it? Uh, it is an enterprise and, uh, I don't have any objection to anybody making money, but there is always a lingering question of. How much, how much grief do I as your neighbor have to take so you can take money? And that's really at the core of this issue. And whether it can be tamped down enough to, to continue to make it work. So, uh, those are my concerns. Quite frankly, um. I would be in favor of letting the applicant and his legal counsel digest these comments. That I, that we've made and, and yet to be made here, uh, and think about what they might be able to do to address some of these concerns. And I'd certainly like to hear more from public works on the actual, um, traffic capacities out there. And what this do, it may not be a concern, but I'm, I just don't know at this point. So I guess my bottom line is there are a lot of concerns out there. I think. This can be bridged and will not satisfy the, the people that live there that absolutely don't want this. But if they can be bridged enough and this conditional use permit is for a limited period of time, so we see how it works. I could get behind it, I believe.
Okay, uh, this is Kelly Rast. Um, I'm gonna echo my fellow board members with what they said, but I am gonna highlight a few of the points that I'm. Very much, uh, concerned about. There, and somebody did bring up the fact with restrooms that, uh, you know, where people are gonna relieve themselves. I believe at the other facility at one fifty ninth and Schweitzer, that was an issue. Um. You know, for one of the family members that lived close by there, but, um, and if you're having a showcase all day. So I agree with. There's great points about everything, but when you reach a tipping point, something good can turn bad very quickly. And I think that's gonna be our balancing act here, um, is to figure out where that right line is. Um, and I do want to say that. This needs to be a huge learning lesson for the board and staff because I am one that will say, I thought. This was a huge win when we relocated you on Metcalf, because we thought that that was, it's a beautiful building. It's a great addition on Metcalf. But I clearly thought the facility and all of the organization was gonna be contained on Metcalf. So. I personally, you know, feel bad for the residents that are now dealing with this and having to go through this anguish again. Because I really did think that as well, that it, it was, it was done over and, and done on one ninety first and we found a better home for. The facility or for your business. Um, and it is a commercial business first and foremost. Yes, it's great. It helps the kids. I always love that too. Um, but it is a commercial business and that needs to be always still be, and, and I'm not against making money as well, but we have to balance that within the community. So I think the biggest thing comes down to is the numbers. I think that adding the showcases is just more of an additional. Capitalistic venue or opportunity, and I think that opens the door for too many people being out there. And it was already stated that the original C U P, there was only supposed to be twenty five athletes, but it's been said many times and very openly and candid that. It far exceeded that for the reason of the transition of teams and stuff. So now we've, we're bringing it up to fifty six, but we just have to really watch the numbers. Cause that's what's going to potentially take away from, you know, using this land at that facility or, you know, that site for this purpose. Um, and so that, those are my biggest concerns and I really feel like we can't, we can't just. Leave it open ended for coaches, for, you know, parents, for friends, all these other people like we, there has to be. A number that sits down and now people do, we did not have the zoning board, um, or a lot of the boards. There was not really a good place for, you know, for people to complain and to send in their comments. But there is now, there is a form on the website where people now can do it and that's only been effective, you know, uh, from this year. Um, so that can be handy for people to have a place to go and voice their concerns or whatever, but. I, yeah, from a board standpoint, we really need to look at the showcase things from my standpoint. Anything that's sort of an all day thing, there needs to be some consideration for restrooms or, you know, taking care of that issue. Um, I'm also for the fact of bringing the time up a little bit in the evening. I'm also for the fact of bringing the time up a little bit in the evening because yes, people would linger just because it practices over at nine does not mean it's going to be quiet from then on, you know, so we got to allow for that transition time as well. But yeah, the numbers are very concerning that they're just too open ended and they can get out of hand real quick. So we need, we need to finalize that, but that's all.
Thank you. In hearing the board's concerns, I've created our list of things that are concerning us, parking adequacy, the number of folks that are on the property and looking at the cap, traffic safety, potentially stop signs, or you know, things in that regard. The length of the C U P noise study or the noise that is generated, I should say noise study, but take it being sensitive to the noise and then looking at a, a change in the time of day. And with that being one, two, three, four, five, six different items, or at least four that are going to have more depth. I, I'm not opposed to asking staff and the applicant to go back and then next couple of weeks, come up with a plan for that and then bring it back here. In a shorter length.
I, I agree with that. I, I think, I think rather than just forcing a vote on this one way or the other, at this point, I think there's, we need to see just how far the parties can reach across to each other. I'm confident that council and staff have heard what we've had to say and would have heard what the neighbors that are concerned about it have had to say. I think right now it's up to the creativity of the applicant to look at what he can and can't do, work with staff and, and basically show us how you know, next time, how close you can get to addressing these questions in an effective way. At that point, you know, if a reasonable effort's made to address those issues and we get some clarity on the traffic part of it for sure. I'd certainly be willing to vote on it at that point, but I think we need to give the applicant and staff an opportunity to more specifically address these issues now that all these issues have been laid out clearly for everyone to hear.
And I would include that your, the traffic numbers that seem to be in question, just to kind of triple check those as well.
Right.
Your chairman?
Yes.
Jay Leipzig, just a brief comment to address bringing this item forward to you again for a continuance. I certainly would be supportive of that as well, a chance to, to, to look at those, those traffic numbers and try to come up with some other solutions as well. So we certainly would be supportive of that as well.
Yeah, I. Mr. Chairman Fred Wingard, um, I, looking at number three, it says no more than fifty six people. Is this board comfortable with that number if we were to strike for, and there would not be any showcase events?
I'm not opposed to that number because if he's adding, if he's looking to add another field, there's going to be folks out there. My thing would be is if you're adding more people. I think Kelly made the comment, you're getting to that point where they're coming and going, there's parking, there's, there's other that volume.
Would there be, Fred Winger again, would there be support of dropping the showcase events?
Well, or I wouldn't say dropping the showcase events, but limiting the number of people that are at this site for the showcases. So if you're doing fifty six, you can do the showcase maybe within that fifty six or whatever the number is. That is, that way you don't have the, you know, because I really think like the all day events and I mean, you're, it's a seven days a week, nine A M. To nine P M. Business in the residential area. I mean, it's really, and I think the commissioners got it wrong. I mean, we've never approved this and it's gone to the commissioner. So now it's back because it's there. It's already been approved by the commissioner. So I think we're just trying to make it work to where we have a, a medium.
We, we did, you know, Fred Winger, again, we did approve for this applicant, a brand new facility with you know, Mac, you know, much more capacity. It would seem like for the showcase events, they could be done elsewhere. Number five, just for staff, hours of operation. Shall not be earlier than nine A M. And no later than seven P M. And then maybe Monday through Sunday, there's.
Did you read that?
Well, this is, these, no, these are the recommendations. So that of us coming next week, I mean, that would be like seven P M. And then adding, there shall be no occupancy on the property after seven twenty P M. So we don't have the lingering all evening, the residents wanted some. And then potentially we add a sixteen that said a stop sign shall be added to the property at the entrance to one hundred and ninety first street. Sean, can we specify a stop sign and?
Yes, Mr. Chairman Sean Penn, the county planning staff, certainly staff can go back and revisit some of these based on the comments that we've received from the zoning board. The applicant is also agreeable to coming back at the next meeting on October fourth to reconsider some of these options. And maybe they might have a proposed revision to their narrative and what they would be willing to offer in, in the way of any revised conditions. Certainly staff would provide additional information. So if the board would recommend a continuous, we could revisit some of these issues that, given the volume of comments we've received, I've got about five pages of notes here. I think that would be a good idea to reconsider just to address some of these issues. May not address them all and the applicant may not agree with everything, but I think it would be a good opportunity for us to reconsider some revised stipulations and revise narrative.
Yes, this is Keller. I, I agree with that, but I agree with Fred and all of us right now, kind of letting the applicant and staff kind of know what we're thinking. Because there's no sense that they come back and we're like, no, you're still way off. So it's probably best that we are looking at more of like a seven o'clock shutdown time. So the people who live out there can enjoy the quiet of the evening and the peacefulness. And there needs to be the lingering, there needs to be a hard cold number as far as who's on the facility. And then they can do whatever they want within those numbers. It's not going to change if they're going to do a showcase versus something else, but they still have to operate within the limits of what that field or that area is appropriate for in the residential area. So I think that it's important for us to give the feedback now so we don't have to do this again.
The, I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say, I, I agree with that. And I, I really resist just sort of unilaterally telling any applicant in their financial interest in this thing. Well, this is what you have to do. I think it's much more important that they get a sense of where we are on this and then have a chance to react to it with staff and come back with what they think a reasonable way to address our concerns are. Then it's up to us to decide whether we think, you know, we think it's enough or not. And then we can vote and then the county commissioners can make the decision because we're just a recommending body, but I would, if, if chair has no objection, I would be prepared to make a motion to continue this matter until the next regular meeting of this board so that staff and the applicant and their legal counsel can determine what their best response might be to the concerns we've expressed here today.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Fred Winger's second.
Okay. Before we vote on that, I just want to make a couple of other discussion points real quick. I think the time of day isn't about just the evenings, but it's like, maybe you don't do Sundays at all. Because what we're really, what we're really trying to get to is the residents. And that's seven days a week, every night till nine o'clock, this is happening. So we're trying to be sensitive to that, I think is really the goal, not you know, a two hour type timeframe. And then the second question I had for staff in the conditional use permit, when they get that, when I know there's been recent changes about renewing that. Is that only for accessory buildings? Was that, so it's only for accessory buildings? So if we did a five year, they would have to come back and go through everything and the expense and all of that. Where are the ten years? So, but if you had a building, that's the one that's now kind of, if you don't have complaints and things are good, it just kind of is a reviewed and done.
Mr. Chairman Sean Penn, that's correct. This type of use will require renewal under the current regulations that recent amendment for accessory buildings that didn't require C P was only for accessory buildings on residential or rural property.
Right, perfect. Thank you for that. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, we go ahead and do a rule call on that.
Dan Foyle. Rod Richardson.
I.
Kelly Rast.
Hi.
Ken Klingon Smith.
Hi.
And Fred Wayne.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman Sean Penn, the planning staff, I will note that the next zoning board meeting is on October fourth at six thirty P M. In this same room. So we'll consider reconsider this application at that meeting on October fourth.
Are there any other applications that are going to come up that night?
There are other applications scheduled for that meeting, including another three, three other existing applications, including another athletic facility complex on Metcalf.
Is it, is it reasonable to make sure that this application is the first one we hear?
Yes, that will, that will be the case. We'll consider this as old business and we'll put this first on the agenda. Yes.
Would that have public comment again or no?
It's not necessary to reopen a public hearing since public hearing is closed. It'd be the board's prerogative.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Looking at the business before the board, is there any other business? And I did have one question related to the vacancies. Some of them are, I think, what two vacancies are actually open? Related to, are they, who's appointing them or how's that?
Jay Leipzig, the two vacancies that are open are the chair's appointments. And I've, I have heard names, but they don't have those before the board of county commissioners yet. So.
Okay, so those are both the chairman of the admissions positions. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you.